Hi, Annie, can you hear us? One's tapping away.
Sorry. I need to mute myself.
Yeah. Katie, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. And it was warm today. Felt like spring almost.
I wouldn't know. I don't think I've outside at all during daylight.
glimpse of it running in from one meeting to the other.
Nice.
About three minutes. We just shaved that two and a half. Maybe on the background. Getting some pretty gnarly background. Hey Hugh, how you doing?
I'm good. How you doing, Mike?
Doing good, doing good. Another day in paradise?
Oh, absolutely. Shane said it was warm outside today.
Oh, really? Good. I was actually out bringing some Christmas lights today.
Oh, nice.
Want to push the issue? I saw. I saw a post, we'll get started here in a second. I saw a post where somebody had like a little, little line of Christmas lights and then it went down to a Grinch. The pile of the Christmas lights. Like, that's my kind of Christmas light. That's good.
I love it. I love it. Yeah.
Okay, we are going to get started. This is our 2020 annual comp plan and development code amendments workshop. We have, for the record, council member receivers on, council member Comiscus, councilman Kurtz, Mayor Proten, Kennedy, council member Langford, Councilman Foerier, and councilman Reddell. You missing anyone? And also on the line, we have staff, Katie Allen. We have Lisa Keys, Todd Henderson, RJ Stevenson, and Svenson's in camp, Ben Schmidt, Sergeant Morgan, Justin Reddell. And that's it. We also have a few citizens on as well. All right, so Lisa, you want to kick us off for the?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So the purpose of this workshop this evening is to go over, we have a total of seven annual comp plan and development code amendments this year. And usually by this point in the year, I will, would have already workshopped all of the amendments with you. But we wanted to make sure that we had enough time that we could go through them and then I could answer any of your questions, et cetera. Next slide, please. So as I said, there are seven code amendments. We have no comp plan amendments this year and all seven are city initiated. And the code amendments include permitting food trucks as a limited accessory use in our commercial and mixed use zones. As you may recall, last year, we, you made some amendments to allow for those food trucks as an accessory use in the industrial zone as a pilot and that is, seems to have worked out fairly well. And so we brought forward to planning commission the idea to allow it in our commercial zones as well. They actually recommended expanding into the mixed use zones. We also have one that is a code cleanup item to basically update our definition of junked vehicle in the development code to make it consistent with the definition in the RCWs. We have, we have an amendment that is dealing with process improvements related to the fact that we're doing our we're doing our subdivisions, et cetera, and all of our development proposals now electronically. And so there's a lot of language in the process section of the code that deals with the number of paper copies and MyLars, nobody even uses MyLars anymore. It also is providing for that in the case of Platts, short Platts and binding site plans that like every other jurisdiction in Washington and Idaho, we want to require the applicants to be responsible for recording their own Platts. It's just a process improvement. It takes, it's time consuming for staff to have to actually do the recording and it really should be the applicant that does it. We also have one related to increasing the maximum lot size for detached, single-family housing or in to 60% in the R2 zone, and I'll get into that a little bit in just a minute. Eliminating minimum and maximum lot sizes in the R1 and R3 zone. You eliminated them last year in the R2 zone. Also, probably the biggest lift of the amendments is an update to our lighting standards and I'll walk you through the reasons for that in just a little bit, as well as changes to our residential building permit application requirements. And this is really insider baseball. There was a change in the wording in the international residential code that we need to reflect also in our code as it relates to requirements to be consistent with the changes to the building code. So next slide, please. So the procedural summary, planning commission originally reviewed the docket in March of 2020 and then we didn't meet for several months. So when we finally got around to meeting again in July, they approved the docket. We did workshops in August and September. And we held a public hearing in October. And November 4th, they ratified the, their recommendations. And so tonight we have the public hearing before city council. Next slide, please. So with all of these comprehensive plan and code amendments, our code actually requires some, some specific findings and there's a couple of things that we need to recognize. And I want you to be aware of the fact that we, the required SEPA review has been completed and proposed amendments. And all public and agency notice requirements were met and accomplished in a timely manner. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation as best we could in this COVID year. And the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify at a public hearing before the planning commission. Next slide, please. So our code is very specific as to what the criteria for approval are, section 10-4B-5. And so these are the findings that, that you need to make to approve these, that such an amendment is consistent with a comprehensive plan is not and is not detrimental to the public welfare. It has, a change in economic, technological or land use conditions has occurred to warrant the modification. It is found that an amendment is necessary to correct an error. It's found that an amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is found that an amendment is necessary to provide for a use which was not previously addressed or those amendments as deemed necessary by city council as being in the public interest. So those are kind of the, the criteria that you, you want to think about as, as we walk through these. Next slide, please. So the first one, as I mentioned, was the food trucks as a limited use in commercial and mixed use zones. Next slide, please. Next. So the amendments are really exactly the same amendment that we made in the industrial zone last year to allow for food trucks as an accessory use in the commercial and mixed use zones, provided there's an existing use and the, and there are certain permitting requirements related to providing us with a site plan and making sure that it's laid out appropriately. It meets health department requirements, et cetera. So, next slide, please. In, you will find in your packets that the, the planning commission's findings, conclusions and recommendations. And within that, we have identified relevant comp plan goals related to governance, economic development and economic development. Next slide, please. So the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this amendment. And so again, you, the, tonight, we have the public hearing and it's an opportunity to take public testimony and we will be coming back at the end of, at the, or next meeting with, with an ordinance related to any of these complete code amendments that you decide to move forward. Next slide, please. The second one is the amendment to junk car definition. And the reason why this is important is because our code was inconsistent with state law. When Sergeant Morgan and his crew are doing enforcement, they're looking at one definition. When we're doing code enforcement and it's on private property, not on the public street, we're using another definition. And so we're trying to, we just want to make them consistent. So next slide, please. So our current city definition of junk vehicle is any vehicle substantially meeting at least two of the following conditions. Is extensively damaged, such damage including but not limited to any of the following, a broken window or windshield or missing wheels, tires, motor, or transmission is, is or appears to be inoperable and is without a current valid registration plate. So this is what the RCW defines as a junk vehicle. It means a vehicle meeting at least three of the following requirements is three years older, older, is extensively damaged, such damage including but not limited to any of the following, a broken window or windshield or missing wheels, tires, motor or transmission, is apparently inoperable and has an approximate fair market value equal only to the approximate value of the scrap in it. And I know Sergeant Morgan, I'm sure you're doing that analysis every time you have one of these cases. But again, long story short is to, for consistency and it's important that, that our definition be consistent with the state definition. Next slide, please. Again, we identify governance goals in an economic development policy within the comp plan goals and policies that support this action. Next slide, please. And the planning commission did recommend approval. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause for a second to see if you had any questions on the first two of these.
Yeah, Lisa, on the, the junk car definition, I know in the past, we typically have to be in line with the RCWs. Is there, there a case here where it's okay if we don't? Not that I have a problem with changing it, but I just want to kind of get all the information because obviously ours is totally, is quite different. Is it a problem if we don't change it?
So I believe that there is, there's a, there's a, we can be more restrictive. We can't be less restrictive. But again, it's how we deal with, and junk vehicles are a great example. If they're on the street, PD is the one who needs to enforce on them. If they're on private property, it's the PEBs group that, that does the code enforcement. It's helpful if we're all using the same definition. And so from a consistency standpoint, I think it makes a ton of sense.
Thanks.
Down mute.
Can you explain to me, Lisa, about the food trucks? Why we want to expand this to a different, different area? Different, yeah, different area?
So last year, when we considered the food trucks, it was for a very specific reason for a couple of businesses that were located in the industrial zone that wanted to be able to bring food trucks in as a complement to their business. They didn't want to be in the restaurant business, but it would complement their business. And, and when we considered that last year, the suggestion was that we should consider that as a pilot and if it works out well, we might consider expanding it. And so, and it has worked out very well and it's been a very positive addition. The, so the suggestion was that we would expand not just to the industrial zone. We've actually had requests in other areas of the city to be able to do this. And actually it had to enforce on food trucks that were set up in, in zones not within that areas that were not within the industrial zone. Long story short is that we felt like it, it would be a good addition, that, that food trucks are really a place-making kind of thing. They tend to activate spaces. We use them for events like, like the, like the farmer's market and it really enhances that event. Again, in these COVID times, when, when restaurants are really struggling to find ways to make ends meet, the food truck has been an outlet for some of those businesses. And so, so that was the suggestion again, that we expand it to commercial. When planning commission considered it, they felt strongly that we shouldn't limit it just to the commercial zones, but we should actually also include the mixed use zones. So that was, so the, so the amendment was expanded to include those as well.
I can understand the desire to, to bring this forward. However, I would just like to hear from the rest of the council about the wisdom of bringing this forward at a time when we're shutting down our own restaurants and prohibiting who they can serve and how many and at what location. And, and on one hand, one could easily say that we're bringing in competition for them who are already being kicked around. So I'd like to hear from some of the other councils about what they think about this.
Councilmember Kurtz?
I guess under the current COVID restrictions that the governors put in place, would food trucks even be allowed to operate right now? I'm just wondering if they would be in need of competition with our businesses and I, I didn't think so, but I wanted to ask.
So I would, I would interpret that they would be allowed because they are by definition takeout. And so, so they're, obviously they, they wouldn't be allowed to have any seating areas or anything like that, but.
Yeah, can we go back to the slide for, for the food trucks? I want to see again where we're looking at putting them.
So yeah, my, my apologies that I went so quickly that I, one more slide, please. One more slide, please. One more slide, please. There we go. So we're looking at, right now it's allowed only in the industrial zone. We're proposing that it be allowed in C1 and C2 zones as well as in the RDC zone and M1, M2 and M3.
So what's left?
Yeah, residential.
So public, so any residential zones, any public zones, P and O. So residential P and O.
So, go ahead, sir.
Councilmember Dunn, in your hand.
Um, so I'd, I'd speak in support of the amendment in that we have a solid feel for what this amendment has done as performance in the zones to date. I reflect on how it's been received and I'd say positively received, both by the businesses who are resident, brick and mortar in our city. I'll speak specifically to, you know, brew house and ale house who are able to bring in what otherwise they would not have access to. Lisa, I have a question. Could you define a little bit the utility of limited use in reference to that?
So, so we have, uses are either outright permitted, they're limited uses, or they require conditional use permit. In the case of a limited use, there's just additional design standards associated with that. And if we could go to the next side, slide, please, I can show you exactly what the limited use restrictions are. So, and this already exists in all the zones that, that mobile sales and concessions are already a limited use in all these zones. And they require an application for approval of a temporary use permit as outlined in section 10-4I-I. Usually therefore only, originally it was only for special events, but now it says mobile, mobile food service establishments may be located on private property or adjacent park, parking in the public right-of-way as an accessory use where principal use has already been established on the subject property. The mobile sales and concessions may be located in the public right-of-way when associated with a special community event such as Liberty Like Yard Sale Weekend with the approval of the adjacent property owner or business. So that's a second circumstance. And the hours of operation, the mobile concession stand shall be limited to the hours of operation of the principal use associated with the subject property, except when associated with a community event in which case the hours of operation for the mobile concession shall be limited to the hours of operation of that community event. And so those were the conditions that we put in place in the industrial zone and it seems to have worked perfectly. So this is, so this, so this section was added to each of those, the C1, C2, the M zones and the RDC zone.
Mayor Proten Candy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These food trucks, they're still required, are they required to have a business license to operate within the city?
Yes, if they have, if they do over $2,000 worth of business in a calendar year, then they are required to have a business license. They're also required to have and actually provide us with a copy of their health district permit for operation.
I assume we have no check and balances to determine if they're doing $2,000 in a year's time.
Any more than we have any check and balances for any of our other business licenses.
We can, this is RJ. So one thing we can do with a business, if we're suspecting, we can check their sales. I mean, we deal with a two-month lag. I mean, there is, there is a check where we can see how much business they are doing.
Thank you. I'm trying to, I'm working on seeing if Todd can pull up the zone map real quick, just to go take a look at.
Mayor, I have a question for Lisa while Todd tries to pull up the map. So it appears in downtown Spokane that a food truck can just drive downtown, park and sell tacos, burritos. That's not the case here, is it Lisa? Don't they need permission from us?
They have to get it, they have to get a temporary use permit. And they actually do, they actually do in the city of Spokane also. It's not as it would appear. They do have to get a permit.
And then if they're on private property, they need permission from the property owner.
That is correct. And actually downtown Spokane partnership sponsors a number of food, like food truck Fridays and whatnot. And so it's, it's, it's an event between downtown Spokane partnership in the city. But, but yes, they do require permits in Spokane as well.
Councilmember Foerier?
Yes, so we're having discussion tonight, the action to be taken is later this evening or at next meet, next two meetings.
So, so this, later this evening, there'll be a public hearing for the public to be able to testify on this. I'm not bringing back the ordinance until the following meeting. So you'll have your first creed ordinance on December 1st and the second read on December 15th.
Perfect. Then if I could point out the email that Lisa sent out, I'm not sure when it, when she sent it, but it's called docket. Proposed, what is it, Lisa?
So it's.
Proposed amendment, yeah, dockets, comma, proposed amendment. 68-page document, pages three through 11 talk all about the changes to the ordinance. And what's great is the changes, the wording in the, in the document has changed in red lettering. So it's easy to pick it out. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on this one? Chris, Chris?
So, yeah, so, so we said just, sorry, it looks like I'm looking away, but I've got a bigger map on my other monitor here. So you don't have to flip back. Was it just M1 and M2 or did you have M3 in there as well?
So we had, it is all of the mixed use zone, so M1, M2, M3, C1 and C2. So, okay, plus RDC.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I kind of have mixed feelings on this. You know, Odin brought up a really good point about not bringing in additional competition to our current restaurants who are struggling. But then again, on the other hand, it might open up, open up an opportunity for them if they're not like, say Fieldhouse, for example. They're, if, if they're doing like they did originally, they won't be open at all. So maybe if they had a food truck, they could keep their overhead low, but still serve out of the food truck. Same with, maybe something like Barlow's. But then again, there's other restaurants that are open for takeout already. Given COVID, this is, this is a really, really hard one to, to consider. Thank you.
Councilmember Receivers?
I, I personally take the stance of, let's take a step back and assume COVID wasn't here. It's, you know, we got, it's not going to be here forever. And what policy do we want for the city long-term, not just given this finite amount of time? I'm comfortable with the change in the, with the change being proposed. I understand what Councilmember Langford is discussing with the, with the restaurants, our existing brick and mortars and will this hurt them? I'd rather leave it up to the businesses to, to run their own business models out there rather than diving in the weeds. Um, I'd rather leave it up to the businesses to to run their own business models out there rather than diving into weeds of whether a food truck's good or bad for them. Um, a lot of people ask for them. Um, I think the community at large has said we'd prefer have some of the additional options out there. I don't think COVID needs to make the decision for right now. I think long term, this is probably a pretty good uh, change to our policy.
Other thoughts by council? Okay, not hearing any.
All right, Todd, can you can you bring us back to the the presentation, please? Thank you. And so the next, the next one is just best junk cars. Is the process section. So, um, this amendment is really dealing with some specific requirements in city code section ten one D um, related to recording plaits and binding site plans. Next slide, please. Specifically, we want to, uh, we're removing any requirements for Mylar Plats. Nobody does that anymore. Um, we're eliminating the requirements for hard copies and require only electronic copies where appropriate. And this is really, this is a really very important process improvement, both for our development community and for our staff. Um, when we get these large paper documents, we then have to manage them as records and the retention schedule on those is crazy. If the original format is electronic, I can file them electronically and not not have to deal with all of the records retention issues. There's, I mean, there's still some things that we have to do electronically, but it's just way cleaner and easier to manage, um, the files as electronic. It also streamlines things for our developers. Um, so so that was the that was the second part of the amendment. The third part of the amendment is actually putting the onus on the applicant to uh, record approved documents like plaits and binding site plans rather than city staff. And that's again, it's it's time consuming, um, particularly in these COVID times. It's it's, um, it's challenging, but even in in a regular setting, um, we it it requires several hours running down to the courthouse and, um, um, jumping through a lot of hoops that really should be, the onus should be on the applicant to do that once. All the signals, they can't record it until they have the city signatures. And so that's your check and balance. Next slide, please.
A quick question, two couple of questions from Councilmember Foyer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a question on the eliminate the requirements for hard copies. Does that mean you're not going to accept hard copies at all? Or is it still an option?
It's still an option, and we do, we we will always, we will always accommodate the, um, the applicant. But, um, what we found is that most people are thrilled to death that they don't have to do hard copies.
Well, I'm sure, but I just, the right, you you will still take a hard copy for somebody that doesn't live in twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilor Kamiskas.
Uh, Lisa, with regards to requiring the applicant to record the plats, is that standard operating procedure pretty much for other jurisdictions?
Yes, it is. It's, um, I was actually kind of floored when I got to Liberty Lake and found out that staff had to go down to the county office building to record these.
Okay, thanks. I'm I'm all for anything that's going to streamline our process. Thank you for looking at this.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Next slide, please. So again, um, we had several governance policies that supported this amendment. Next slide, please. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Any other questions on that one? Next slide, please.
Councilor Kreskis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, hey, Lisa, sorry to keep asking questions. So last year when we looked at this, um, there was, if I remember correctly, the the request to change the maximum lot size was developer requested, I think, in in a certain zone. Is that correct?
That is correct. So this is, this is where this is a code cleanup thing. So, um, the concept in our comp plan is that R one is the least dense residential zone. R two is a little bit denser. R three is the most dense. So, um, uh, the request, the request, um, last year changed the maximum lot coverage in the R one zone to sixty percent for detached, single family homes. And it, uh, we already have sixty percent, um, uh, as the maximum lot coverage in R three. R two is it, R two is the only zone that's not at sixty percent. It's at fifty percent, other than the River District. In the River District, um, the the maximum lot coverage is eighty percent. Next slide, please. So what I just said, so.
Okay, sorry, I got ahead of you.
Yeah, yeah. So so R three currently allows coverage of sixty percent for single family detached homes and seventy percent for attached, single family homes. The R one zone was increased from forty to sixty percent for single family. And like I said, an RDR, uh, currently allows an eighty percent lot coverage. So in the River District. Next slide, please. Um, so this is what the amendment looks like. It's as simple as striking out the fifty and bumping it to sixty. Next slide, please. Um, there are a number of housing governance, land use and economic development, uh, policies and goals that support this in the comp plan. Um, this is really a minor change and and as I said, it's really kind of a a code cleanup thing to to make sure that our densities are internally consistent with what the comp plan proposes for them to be. Next slide, please. So the planning commission actually recommended denial, and it was a split vote, but they recommended denial because those that voted against it had voted against the, um, the amendment last year to increase maximum lot coverage in the R one zone. So to be consistent, they felt that it was important that they made that statement. Questions?
Councilor Kurtz.
For the ones that I guess dissented on this, was there any discussion about their rationale besides being consistent?
Um, again, because I think what we heard last year was that really, um, the the lot coverage issue really only affects, um, basically the the backyard setback. You have front yard, side yard setbacks. Um, and one of the things that this, um, the reason why this was brought forward as a private application last year was because what they were finding was that on minimum lot size or lots that were met the minimum lot size, that they were having difficulty when they were putting, um, when they were doing a rancher or a single level and, uh, putting a patio on, because if it's covered, then then that counts towards the building lot coverage. And so, um, they were having difficulty, um, being able to put a roof over the patios and still meet the, uh, the, uh, lot coverage requirements.
I was, uh, I was also in on this meeting, uh, as a participant, and I think that the um, the theme consistently for those that were against it was that the houses are crammed in tight anyways it is. Uh, the green space is getting somewhat smaller. And they were, the ones that were against it were somewhat disappointed, I think, that it was, uh, the last one was approved. So I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, that that's absolutely correct.
Councilor Dunn.
Um, Lisa, could you, um, put that development code up, um, once more time, the map and, um, identify the R two zone?
Absolutely, um. Todd, can you get the zoning? So R two is located over, um, where Stone Hill is. Um, and the nor the northern portion of Rocky Hill and then Stone Hill. There's also a little bit, um, there's also a little bit of R two. Hmm, I'm trying to find it here.
North of Valley Way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, but the most of, most of the R two, with the exception of Stone Hill, has been basically built out. And a little bit of Rocky Hill and Stone Hill, uh, remain to be, uh, developed still.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
That's my fire.
Lisa, when you say a little bit, can you define a little bit for me?
So I think they probably have one, they have one to two phases left in Rocky Hill. Um, probably so probably, I I believe it's like sixty lots that they have left, fifty five or sixty lots. So that could be one phase or two.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Portem Candy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, are we working towards more uniform building codes throughout the city?
We, I I don't know how to answer that question. We already have uniformed building codes. Um, the building code is, um, consistent. What's different is zoning code.
Okay. Councilmember Kamiskas.
Yeah, just a quick note. I know, you know, Lisa, you made the point about, well, there's not very many lots left that would be subject to this. But we also need to think toward the future as people, um, may want to add on to their homes. Um, you know, is this going to, you know, make make those lots seem even smaller? You know, say someone in my my neighborhood was built in the mid nineties, you know? People are starting to make do renovations and additions. And, um, again, kind of, you know, torn on this one, you know, while it would be nice to be able to add on, you know, an additional bathroom or something upstairs or additional room. Um, is that going to ruin the aesthetic that that neighborhood has had for so long by, uh, by adopting this, um, larger coverage? Um, it doesn't really, it doesn't just apply to those those lots that are vacant. It would also apply to anything going forward on existing homes with expansion, correct?
Uh, that is true. However, the however, the the controlling factor more than uh, building lot coverage are the setback requirements. So the front yard, side yard and rear yard setbacks, um, actually, um, do probably control that more than the lot coverage.
Councilor Langford. Councilor Langford. Councilmember Langford. He can't, can you hear me? Odin? Can you hear me? I see his hand up. Not sure why you can't hear me.
He can't, he can't hear again.
The opposite problem I had last night. Can you type it in?
I just, uh, Mayor, I just texted him.
Okay. Looks like he might try to reconnect. We'll go ahead and keep going until he can reconnect here. Uh, Councilor Foyer.
Uh, he has two questions, uh, Lisa, if I can.
Yes.
Looking through the, uh, your docket here, says during the planning commission's deliberations, um, they made a motion, but it failed for a second. Is that correct?
That is correct. They, um, they started out by recommending approval and then they recommended denial.
But they made a motion?
They, well, so they they made a motion. First, they went through, um, they made a motion for approval, but it died for lack of a second. Um, then they, they actually had a split vote, and then somebody changed their vote at the last minute.
Nice.
So it was a very close vote.
Thank you. My second question, real quick, if I can, is was there any public testimony during the, uh, planning commission's public hearing?
You know, there was, there was not. There was one person that was on the line who asked a clarifying question, but not really any testimony and not on this particular one.
Thank you.
Councilor Langford, can you hear me?
Yes, I just had to reboot and get started again. I couldn't hear anybody.
Okay. Thank you. We can hear you.
Great, thank you. So.
Yes.
Are we still talking about the the lot sizes?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. May I have a moment, Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Uh, Lisa, I think that, uh, Chris, one of the last things I heard was her talking about what about the future? And I didn't hear the response then. If somebody builds on one of these lots and they want to add a deck later on, what's what's the, uh, uh, favorability of them being able to do that?
Again, it would depend on whether this passes or not. But, um, if this was to pass, then, um, I think that it it would be more likely that they would be able to do that. Um, my comment to Chris that you also didn't hear was the fact that the thing that probably controls that sense of open space more than anything else has to do with the front yard, the side yard and the rear yard setbacks, and those don't change.
So we're just talking about the consumption, the percentage consumed by the actual home footprint on the lot.
And it's not even, it's not even that exactly. Um, so it only counts, it it only counts those things that are higher than or those parts of the building that are higher than thirty inches high. So if you have a deck with a railing but no cover, it doesn't count. As soon as you put a cover over it, it counts towards the lot coverage.
And if that, if we vote for this now, uh, if other land becomes available, do you know of any other, uh, land that this would impact in the future as being developed or that could be developed?
Um, again, there is some land, uh, still remaining undeveloped in, uh, the northern part of Rocky Hill and in Stone Hill that are that is zoned R two. Um, but no, there's not, there's no other land that, uh, and again, keep in mind, this is, this is the higher density is allowed in R one and allowed in R three. And in the River District, it's actually much higher than even than any of those zones. So this, so the, so R two is the only zone that kind of has this handicap, if you will.
Thank you.
Are we ready to go on to the next one?
Yeah. We have about fifteen minutes.
Hi. The next, with the next one, uh, as, uh, as I let Todd find his place, the next one is. The next, the next one, as, as I let Todd find his place, the next one is eliminating minimum and maximum lot sizes in the R1 and R3 zone, which, and again, this in 2018, the request to eliminate minimum and maximum lot sizes in our two zones was approved by city council. And so, so this one's a little bit more interesting because when you dig into it, you'll realize that the minimum and maximum densities control this issue way more than, than the minimum and maximum lot sizes. So next slide, please. So I, and I'll, so I'm going to give you some examples. So in the R1, single family detached, the minimum density is four units per acre and the maximum density is six units per acre. With a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, which is what it is now for detached, single family homes, developer could create at most six lots per acre because the maximum density is the controlling factor. Without the maximum density limit, the minimum lot size would allow eight plus units of single family or single family units per acre. With no minimum lot size, the developer could create at most six lots. Okay, next slide, please. So for our one attached townhomes, we have a different dense, the density is four units to the acres, the minimum. The maximum is eight units. With a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet, which is what it is now for detached, single family homes, the developer could create at most eight townhouse units per acre because maximum density is the controlling factor. So without the maximum density limit, the minimum lot size would be, would allow 10 plus units of townhomes per acre. And with no minimum lot size, the developer could create at most eight single family lots. So again, your minimum and maximum density controls more than the actual minimum, maximum lot sizes. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, and then there's attached, single family homes. Again, the logic is the same. You, what the controlling factor is the, the minimum and maximum density, not the minimum lot size or the maximum lot size. Next slide, please. In R3, we have a similar situation, actually with the minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet for detached, single family homes. The developer could create at most 10.89 single family lots per acre, which doesn't even meet the minimum density. So actually, the minimum lot size actually makes it impossible. We have a, we have a regulatory impossibility. If you meet the minimum lot size, you don't meet the, the minimum density and vice versa. So with no minimum lot sizes, the developer could create at most 12 single family lots. So, next slide, please. And again, with the duplex, similar, I can go through all these, but the math is the same regardless. It's the density, it's the density limits that, that, that rule here. Next slide, please. The only one that it doesn't really apply to is with, is, has to do with the R3. It's the only place that the math doesn't work is with the minimum lot size of 2,000 square feet for attached townhomes. The developer could create at most 21 townhome units per acre. And there is no maximum density in R3. Next slide, please. So there are some relevant comp plan goals and policies. As you may recall, when we considered this back in 2018, Department of Commerce had suggested that controlling land density, or residential densities through densities rather than minimum and maximum lot sizes is actually considered one of the best practices under growth management. Next slide, please. Oh, so anyhow, the planning commission recommended denial for the same reason. They, that they, it was a split vote, but those who voted against it were opposed to it previously when it was done in the R2 zone. So they continued to be opposed to this and felt that, that this was a way to try and, and develop higher density on smaller lots and that that, that that was antithetical to, to their perception of Liberty Lake. Questions?
Councilmember Dan.
Lisa, could you roll back a slide to what I thought were some best practices? Here, I think I remember you suggesting that it is through the minimum and maximum densities. Refer to the agency or the organization who you said is, refers to that as a better practice than lot size?
That would be the Washington State Department of Commerce, who is responsible for administering the Growth Management Act.
So, you know, I'm just trying to observe that we've got guidance, I'd say, pretty authoritative to say that the best practice is to use these density values rather than the square footage of a lot to maintain character and to define the nature of the community. Right? Okay, just want to make sure I heard that right. It seems like the nature of the proposed change aligns to that best practice.
Councilmember for you.
Real quick, and they still have to maintain property setbacks, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Next slide, please. One more, Todd. Yes, I'm sorry.
Lisa?
Yes.
If, if they're recommend, if the committee is recommending that we don't take action on this, there must have been a particular reason that you're bringing it forward. So what is of your perception of all this?
So if I may, so we had the, we had a docket that was approved by the planning commission to bring forward. My responsibility is to bring forward those cases. Obviously, if it was a privately initiated case, we would still be bringing it forward and it would be city council's decision whether to move forward or not. I feel that the same process applies, that there's no, just because they recommend denial. They, they are not, they are not vested with the authority to deny this. That rests with planning, or with city council, excuse me. So it's coming forward to you. You have a recommendation for the planning commission. You, you, as the legislative body of the city, need to make a determination as to whether or not it makes sense from your perspective to, from a policy perspective for the city.
So as our chief engineer regarding this area, what do you advise?
I brought these, these recommendations forward because I felt that they were worthy of consideration. At the end of the day, your advisory body is the planning commission. So they're making, they're, they're providing their recommendation to you and I'm just bringing it forward. I'm just, I'm just processing the, the applications at this point.
So what we have is a few lots left that can be affected by this decision or not. Can't help anybody that was governed by this decision before this time. If they built on the lot and it was going to be too small or too big, they'd have to either build or move to another lot, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm, I'm kind of concerned that we're willing to even entertain doing it again for the last few remaining lots in an area that has been governed by a different set. So, you know, and particularly the, the whole of the rocky area, Rocky Hill area, including Stonehill and all that. So.
This, this, if I may, if I may just point out, this applies to the, to the R1 and the R3 zone, not the R2 zone. So this, this particular change that we're considering is in R1 and R3. Not R.
And is that not in the areas that I stated?
So, so R1 includes, R1 would include, actually, there's no more Rocky Hill left that's in the R1 zone. No more Stonehill that's in the R1 zone. R1 would include Legacy, Legacy Ridge West. It, um, and that's probably about it. Bellalago. And not much else. I mean, your, your point's still take, well, well taken, but I want to make sure that I'm clear as to what this applies to.
Yes, well. Sorry, I must have misunderstood when you were talking earlier about a little bit of wrong. So thank you for your time.
Councilmember for you.
A quick question on Lisa's comment there. If the areas to, to be developed yet are pre-platted, would they go back and make modifications?
They could.
But would.
Modifications. They could make modifications. But they would have to, they're still limited by the total number of lots that was approved. They could do a minor modification or a major modification. A major modification goes back through the hearing examiner. So, so it's, there's, there's a process.
And just so I understand, in 2018, the council eliminated the minimum, maximum lot sizes in R2?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We've got a few minute warning.
So can I, real quickly, and we can dig into these more at the hearing if we need to, but there's two more code amendments. One is, the one that's probably more important is the updated, the lighting standards. So I'm just going to very quickly cover that. Can you go to the next slide, please? So the, the intent for the light code revisions are to update regulations based on changes in lighting technology. We didn't have LED lights when we developed our original lighting ordinance. It also addresses areas previously not contemplated in the code, things like architectural accent lighting, which has become a thing, accent lighting on statues, monuments and flags, temporary outdoor lighting, recreational facility lighting. We also, it also provides standards for use and plan review consistent with its stated purpose. And in developing this, we referenced the Illuminating Engineering Society, IES, model ordinance, which was endorsed by IDA, the International Dark Sky Association. As you all probably already know, we do have a dark sky ordinance here in the city. So we wanted to be consistent with the intent of the comp plan, but we needed to really update this a lot. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail right now, but you do have the code amendments in here. Next slide, please. And again, we do have relevant comp plan goals and policies in support of this. The planning commission unanimously did recommend adoption of these updated lighting standards. Next slide, please. And then the last one is changes to residential building permit application. This is the one, next slide, please. This one's really insider baseball. It's, it has to do with changed wording in the IRC, which is the International Residential Code. That's for the residential building permits. Next slide, please.
It's seven o'clock. We're going to have to have, talk about this during the.
Okay.
All right. So I want to welcome everybody to the November 17th, 2020 city council meeting. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting consistent with Governor Enzi's orders 20 dash 28 dot 13. Well, 2020, all public meetings continue to be held remotely. We're following the directions of that order. On this agenda, are routine necessary actions for our council to consider? In addition to the public hearing, we also will provide two opportunities for the public to provide comments. We have multiple people, as you can see, doing this meeting remotely. On staff, we have city administrator Kitty Allen, city clerk Anne Swenson, Sergeant Darren Morgan, finance director RJ Stevenson, operations and maintenance director Jen Camp, planning director Lisa Keys, library director Jocelyn Redell, city attorney Sean Bouts. Want to confirm your own, Sean?
I'm here, thanks.
City engineer Ben, I think he was jumping on and IT support Todd had. As I mentioned earlier, there are opportunities for the public to make comment during public hearing and twice for citizen comments outside of the hearing. Most times come, I will acknowledge public participation. There will be a three minute limit during the regular citizen comment period. For the record, please let us know your name. And if you're a City of Liberty Lake resident, to participate on Zoom, you can indicate by choosing the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it's time for you to speak. The first item on the agenda is the invocation. Your pro tem Kenny, would you mind doing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear heavenly Father, I pray that you would be with us this evening as we discuss issues pertaining to the city and making decisions and moving forward that have an effect on our citizens and all of our coworkers. In your son's precious name, I pray, amen.
Okay. Do the pledge of allegiance.
Nice states of America and to the republic for which it comes, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
I will do a roll call now. The city council members who are in attendance, Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember for you.
Present.
And receivers.
Here.
Councilmember Dan.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kurtz. Councilmember Langford.
Present.
Councilmember Comiscus.
Here.
Okay, now we'll go to the approval. Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before asking the council to vote on that, I have one question for clarification on item number 13 ordinances. We have two there. I do read that, or the first one, or number 271 is a first read. Ordinance 270, is that a first read or a second read? Probably Anne Swenson might be able to answer that. Are they both first rated ordinances?
Councilmember Kennedy, this is Katie. Ordinance 270 is a second read.
Second, okay. I'll make a notation of that. Very good. In that case, I request the approval of agenda as presented.
Second by Councilmember Comiscus, all in favor?
I got a question. It looks like there's an item 17 on here as executive session. Is there an executive session tonight?
No, there is not.
I would just ask in the future that if there's not an executive session, that it not appear on the agenda. Might be confusing to the public. It's a good point. Thanks.
Or put it, or put in a, because I, it seems like recently we now have every single possible thing on the agenda. If we, if we're going to leave them on here, maybe note that it's not applicable for tonight's meeting. Will do.
Mayor Protem Kennedy.
I would support that, that it be left there and if there's nothing there, you know, obviously if there's nothing written on there, there wouldn't be something for discussion.
Yeah. We'll make sure and put a not applicable. Okay. We got a second by Councilmember Comiscus. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? I just have it. Okay. Okay. So we'll go, go into our first opportunity for citizen comments. And then you'll have a second opportunity.
This is Mayor, this is Brad Hamlet. I missed uh what my, what my protocol was for being able to speak tonight. What, uh, something in the chat bar or something?
Yeah, you're fine. Just uh let us know you, you're uh, if you're a resident and then you can go ahead and make a comment. You have three minutes.
Sure. Thank you very much. Uh, Brad Hamlet, I live at two, three, two, one, three East Settler Drive. Um, I noticed that the flashing beacons were on the agenda tonight. And uh, just to refresh a few memories, uh, last October, I represented a uh uh, uh, why I brought to the, to the council, a uh petition signed by two hundred uh residents uh in regards to um three flashing beacons that um were of concern. And uh, we were hoping to, that they would get on the list for consideration uh for installation. Uh, and at that time, I think uh that was done. And I was, I, I noticed that um, in the uh, in the information that was sent out or that I have here, that the uh the areas for the flashing beacons have been uh prioritized. Um, it looks like they've been prioritized to me by um the date at which they would be um installed. And I have some concerns because two of the three that we gathered two hundred ci- ci- uh citizen signatures on are at the bottom of the list to be installed in two twenty five, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty four. Um, I would be curious to know um uh what uh criteria was used to determine um, the um time for installation uh for these particular beacons. The three that uh we had submitted some informa- actually, it might have been five, but three for in particular. Uh, Country Vista at Eagle Ben, Country Vista at Eagle, uh Liberty Creek, and then Country Vista at Sharp. Those were the three that we gathered the signatures on. And I see that Country Vista at Sharp is um uh scheduled for two thousand twenty two, uh Country Vista Eagle Ben twenty five and the one right across from the Liberty Creek Elementary uh in uh twenty twenty four. So I'm, I'm just um presenting my concern to the, to the council about the um uh, the length of time that uh I see that these have been put on the list for installation. I know that safety is the prior, one, number one priority of the, of the um city. And I would hope that uh you would uh reconsider uh the timeline for the installation of the flashing beacons at those three areas. Country Vista at Eagle, I mean, Country Vista is one of the busiest roads in the, in the city. I mean, just living here and having to drive up it and go down settler drive, uh, it is a busy, busy road. And I know uh many, many times I have driven up and down the road and those flashing beacons have been a very nice thing to have. Especially when little kids are, are crossing the road or they're on their bicycles. Um, it, it is a very nice uh thing to have. Yeah, and for me as a citizen, uh, because I know there's someone in the crosswalk. They'd either in it or they've just left it. So um, that's, that's my concern. And I hope the, some of those considerations will be uh thought about tonight during your discussions um about the flashing beacons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizen comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you hear me? This is Anne, the city clerk.
Yes, we can hear you.
I do have a citizen comment to read into the record if there are no other participants wanting to speak at this time.
Please do.
Okay, Liberty Lake Town Workshop Citizen Submission from Jack Barata, three, four, five South Legend Cherry Drive, Liberty Lake. In summary, our priority as citizens and taxpayers is to support maintaining this parcel as open space. The twenty-three acres purchased by the town a few years ago for open space border the Legacy Ridge homeowners common ground behind our home. We see occasional hikers pass through on their way to or from the southeast upland. Much more frequently, we observe coyotes, deer, small mammals, turkeys, quail, bald eagle, hawks and cows using the town acreage as shelter, a place to hunt and presumably as a pathway between the lake and the upland. We ask that this plot remain open space since undeveloped land is both limited in Liberty Lake and an important fiscal and ecological asset. We just need to balance interest. For example, the activity of people using this area for walks is a good use as long as they continue to be respectful of homeowners' privacy, which they have been, and the environment. This brings us to the two questions of careful land preservation and economic value. Number one, according to the Lincoln Institute's Open Space Conservation Investing in a Community's Economic Health Study, open spaces can improve property values and thus property taxes. Also, companies are attracted to towns that afford their employees access to scenic and recreational opportunities. Two, as to conservation, do we know if any unprotected, excuse me, as to conservation, do we know if any protected species depends on this land? Has anyone looked at the flora and fauna in terms of both preservation and impacts from hikers? This might warrant initiating a study by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. In short, open space lands are valuable economic assets for any community as well as important investments in our environments. Wildlife are affected and nature lovers need to be considered. So this acreage should remain owned by the town, protected and remain open. Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizen comments? Not seeing any. We will move on to I don't think we have any announcements, proclamations or special presentations. Uh, reports, Aaron, city council. Do you have any council reports?
Yeah, just wanted to share with everybody real quick. Uh, I was contacted by uh Fire Chief Brian Collins to participate in the interview process tomorrow morning um for a couple of new deputy fire chiefs. So I'm looking forward to being part of that process and um will, uh, I guess I can report back on that at uh the next meeting. I'm sure the results will probably come out before then.
Any other uh, Councilmember Dan?
Hey, uh, just a quick shout out and a recap of uh our two thousand twenty as the uh Liberty Lake Kiwanis. A quick recap, this is a service club. Our focus is all about um the kids in our community. And we're got, we're the guys out there um in our cool concession stand setting up uh for popcorn and cotton candy for our movies and there's our summer film festival. And unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't have a chance to do that this year. So it's been a pretty tough year. Um, we're undeterred, but I'll tell you, um, we are very much uh interested and enthusiastic about anyone else who wishes to join us in this regard. Um, being a part of what, uh, something as important as that uh for our community to me is, is, is a great call to action. So um, I shared with others that for me, um, and my kids, my family, to have summer cinema outdoor in our parks is an amazing thing. And I'm doing what I can to try and maybe say, create that memory for um the younger families that are going to go on uh to be here later. So we're out there, we're not going away. Um, and please join us if you can. Uh, libertylakekiwanis.org. Thanks.
Any other council reports? Okay, I have a, a few things. We had our uh meeting today with a uh gentleman and organization that wanted to make a sizable contribution to uh the HVAC uh PD. Uh, so you guys will be getting that information. Um, or I believe it's our next council meeting uh for approval and you'll get the details of that. It uh very, is a very generous uh donation for that. Um, a- as we, most of us know, uh, with Governor Enzley's orders, um, there are some serious restrictions uh in relation to the grocery stores and twenty-five percent capacity as well as restaurants not being able to serve indoor. Um, they can do delivery, things to that effect or outdoor seating. Uh, so it's, I think that um it's more important than ever for us to try to continue our local uh, and make sure these businesses can thrive during all this. We've heard of uh some businesses out in the valley area that are already uh deciding to shut their doors permanently, uh, which is tragic. Um, you know, I think that this is a, a very serious uh situation, not only with COVID and the health and wellbeing, but also the health and wellbeing of our citizens mentally. Um, the health and wellbeing of our local businesses. Um, so I know that we've all done our part to help get through this period uh, to make sure everyone thrives and uh continues to be able to serve. Though I just ask that uh all of our community members continue that um as the businesses continue to challenge. There is a uh fifty, I believe the, the Governor Enzley also mentioned that there is a fifty million dollar grant uh for state businesses uh to be able to apply for to help get through this. Um, that's in addition to what had already been done in the past. Um, but it, but that doesn't take away from our needs uh locally. So just continue to make sure we support local. Uh, we do have a uh, an event if anyone wants to join um this Friday. Uh, there will be a car parade for uh family that uh recently adopted uh some kids uh around two o'clock. And they're going to meet at the end of Gary, I believe that is. Uh, Sergeant Martin, uh Sergeant Morgan.
That is correct. The end of Gary, just at the end of the golf course there.
Yeah. So if you want to join, that'd be a car parade to support that family. Um, that's, that's all I have. The numbers continue with COVID, uh, which Katie will talk a little bit about, um, continue to spike. So I just continue to do our part and make sure that we're doing everything that we can to uh keep everybody safe. Uh, Councilmember Langford?
Yes, Mayor, do you have any reports for our citizenry and uh COVID?
Uh, yeah, you, you can actually go to the uh health, just, and I, for this is for everybody's knowledge. Uh, you can go to the uh Spokane County Health District website. And if you go, you can actually, you do a search on their website via a map. You can do a COVID map, you can type that into a search and it'll pop up a map and you can do it by zip code. Uh, last I checked, it was uh for nine, nine, zero, one, nine. And keep in mind that that extends out for different areas um, as well as nine, nine, zero, one, six. Uh, so it's hard to say precisely uh what is in that area. Um, but the estimates off the map from Spokane County, I believe, last check was around two hundred and thirty-six.
Uh, three hundred and twenty-four at this hour, nine, nine, zero, one, nine.
Yeah. So that's, it's uh already jumped up.
Thank you for putting that information out there, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to city ministry report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, members of the council. Um, first I wanted to start, is there any questions on the agenda that you want more information on before um we get to that part of the agenda on the consent agenda? For the first or second read ordinances. I will make a note that in the future, if there's a executive session, but there's nothing there, we'll put no action required on future agendas. One of the things that you'll not see on this agenda is the settlement agreement with Western State's CAT. We received the final agreement today, midday, and we didn't think it was right to give it to you on, and ask you to make a decision on the same day without enough time to review all the details in the agreement. So we do plan to add that to your December first agenda. And right now, the hearing, if, if their agreement is not reached, the hearing would be in mid-December. So we've been in close contact with Western State's CAT and our attorneys have been in contact with the valley and we'll cover the agreement in more details. And we will make sure that you get a copy of it um before the end of the week. So with that note, I'm going to ask Ben if he can give you all an update on Harvard and Henry Road.
Thank you, Lisa. Can you see me? Sorry, just want to make sure that.
Yep.
It's popping up. Okay, I didn't see my little, my small window. Yeah, so on Harvard Road, we just got an update today that the construction has been pushed out till mid-February. And the main reason is because they want to start construction when they can repair the critical asphalt underneath the bridge. When they have access to uh the asphalt plants, they didn't want to cut the I ninety underneath the bridge and not be able to patch it correctly during this, these next couple of months. So that was the main reason they pushed that off. And then for Henry, we got some good news back that the NEPA was approved, so we can start acquiring property for that project. And we received ninety percent plans last week and are still reviewing those. But uh, it's, it's nice to see all these big parts of the project starting to come together uh before we we get ready to go out to bid.
Mayor Pro Tem Candy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ben, question on Harvard. If it's not scheduled to start in February, would, what would be the anticipated completion date?
Uh, they're looking at getting that completed before school starts so that we can make sure all the bus routes are continuous and that it doesn't have any effect on that. So uh, August is, is what their target timeframe is.
Five months.
Yeah, which is a tight timeline, but I think with a good summer, they can make that work and the contractors confirmed that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next on the, on my report is RJ's going to give you a quick overview of the audit uh report.
So um, good evening, council. Uh, so Friday, we had our exit interview with the state auditor's office for the two thousand nineteen audit. Um, you should have gotten a copy of the exit conference. It's about eighteen pages. Um, if you haven't gotten a copy of that, uh, let me know and I will send you one. Is it once it's final, it's uh still in draft form. So once it's finalized, we'll put it on our website. Uh, it's pleased to let you know that there wasn't uh any uh management suggestions or any findings in report. It was a good audit. Um, the auditors were uh pleased with uh what we were able to supply them. Anne Marie uh did an incredible job um making sure that uh they got the information that they needed in this audit. Um, they did focus on uh certain areas with regard to procurement. Um, and they didn't really find anything um that was alarming to them. So yeah, uh, if you have any questions, uh, let me know. Um, next year's audit, the estimate cost is going to be around eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, and we're hoping to try to do it earlier in two thousand twenty-one than wait for the auditors coming. So if we can get them the reports earlier in the year, they might be able to start our audit in April or May.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for RJ? Okay, not seeing any. Um, just a quick update on city operations, uh, mostly in light of what Governor Enzley's action was over the weekend. Um, so we have basically closed city hall to only staff that have to be there. We do have a number of staff that cannot work remotely for either technical reasons or because of the type of work they do. So we are um really restricting access into and out of city hall um, to only those people that have to be there and only for a very short period of time. I will tell you, all of our employees are working remotely. So if you pick up the phone and you call someone or you email someone, um, that person likely will have, well, they have their phone forwarded to their cell phone and they're working off tablets and, and um laptops. So we're still working. Uh, there's a lot of emails going on. Um, but our doors are closed uh to the public and it's only on an as-needed basis um entering the building. Our library, police department and our field operations are, though, they've, they haven't changed as far as their um ability for the public to access those work areas. But we have taken very strong um steps to make sure that our employees are But we have taken very strong steps to make sure that our employees are following all the guidelines, which is one person per vehicle, masks, disinfectant tools. We do have a wand and I thought, if Jen's on, she can describe it. But it's one of those wands that you fumigate or disinfect, I should say, work areas, cars, equipments and all of that. So we're doing the best we can to be responsive to the needs of our community, but also be mindful of the safety requirements for our employees. Snow removal is an essential, we believe is an essential activity. And so our crews are working and, but, but we are very, we're very strict with how many people are in a vehicle or in a, in proximity in the lunchroom. So we're taking steps to protect their health. We don't know when we're going to get that big, first snowstorm. But Jen's crew is ready to go once we do receive it. We're just trying to keep our, all of our employees healthy. So I'm moving on to COVID. I wanted to give the council a quick update. Our CARES Act, we've spent $270,000 to date. We have two more weeks. We have a few more purchases to make on some miscellaneous things. And then the door will close and as far as we know, we will not be able to use CARES Act dollars anymore. We were approved for, RJ was at 495,000?
That is correct, 495,000.
Yeah, so we've been very mindful of what we've been buying, purchasing. A lot of that is technology that supports remote activities, you know, disinfectant, temperature-taking devices, touchless plumbing devices that we have purchased and are distributing to our businesses. The list is endless. It does take people to deliver all of this and buy the tables, pick up the tables and those kinds of things. But I think we are, I just want to applaud Jen's crew and RJ for being so quick on acquiring, procuring and while acquiring, procuring and finding and then delivering some of the tents and chairs and tables that, that we have purchased, as well as devices that help us do our jobs remotely. The doors, I know someone was working at City Hall today, the electrician was there. So again, we're, we're trying to incorporate into all of our plumbing, our restrooms and our city facilities, touchless doors that I've talked about in the past. We had a mask distribution for our Liberty Lake residents last Friday. The next one will be December 4th. The numbers aren't huge, but I will tell you, the people that do come and pick up their box of masks greatly appreciate the city's purchase of those items. And then finally, as we all know, Governor Inslee's, Governor Inslee's order goes through December 14th. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. So we expect that the public meetings will go, will, will be held remotely at least through that. So on the City Hall, we haven't decided if we're going to open up the Monday after Thanksgiving. We'll probably make that decision on Wednesday before we break for, for Thanksgiving holidays. So that's kind of a quick update. Does anyone have any questions about city operations, city employees? We're trying to do our best to keep everyone safe and informed. Councilmember Langford?
Ma'am, can you tell me whether or not during this COVID period, when people want to get in touch with somebody at City Hall, do they call the same number? That's our regular office number or do we have a different number? If they want to talk to a different department such as Jen Camp's area, do they call that direct or do they call City Hall and leave a message for that person? How does that work? How can they get in touch with particular people in the City Hall during this time?
That's a great question. So everyone has forwarded their desk phone to their cellphone, to a city cellphone or to their own cellphone. And so when I get calls all the time and people don't even know that I'm answering it on my cellphone because I have forwarded my desk phone to my cellphone as have everyone else. So if you call Jennifer Camp on her city phone, if you email Jennifer Camp or if you text Jennifer Camp, she will get that information remotely. So the numbers have not changed and there's no new numbers. It seems to be working pretty well because I'm getting a lot of phone calls from people that are calling City Hall. We also put in a doorbell. So when you come into the foyer at City Hall, you can ring a doorbell and one or two of the people that are there could come in, you know, pick up or drop off whatever it is that you're there for. I, I mean, that, that happens periodically with mails and delivery of supplies and things.
We also have on our, on our door, all the main points of contacts, phone number. And that was also shared on our city Facebook page as well.
I think Councilmember Dunn had his hand raised.
Yes, Councilmember Dunn?
Okay, I just, I want to thank you, Katie, in the administration of the city and leading by example for what is necessary. In the circumstances where we encounter exposure or possible exposures, these actions, these measures, very important to try and make sure that everybody stays safe. So I'm grateful just for leading by example.
Well, thank you. Yeah, the numbers aren't good. We had our, our meeting, our week, our bi-weekly meeting held today, this morning from eight to nine with the Health District and they've gone back to weekly meetings. We had gone to every other week, but under the circumstance, we're now back to weekly. And I have to tell you that between vaccines, that will be out in the middle of December is the identified timeframe. I'm not the expert. I don't want you to think of me as an expert. So I'm just passing on information. Mid-December, they've already identified people in different categories, 1A, 1B, 2, 2A, you know, three and four, and trying to decide how to distribute all of those vaccines. And I have to give a great big appreciation, a voice of appreciation to our health, our Health District. They are incredibly committed to the health of our community. They are suffering from fatigue on their, at the staff level. Volunteers, transportation of people with COVID, mental health, food. I could just go on and on and on and they're doing an incredible job. And over the weekend, I texted or I emailed one of the healthcare workers that we work with to get some feedback on Winter Glow. And so Jen and I, I'll give you an update shortly on that, but they, they're just doing a remarkable job. And I just have to tell you, it is challenging because they are going on all cylinders and have been since March. And I'm just completely impressed with, with the amount of attention and care they're giving to our community. Even just the reporting of these, every day, we get a weekly up, a daily update, excuse me, on the number of cases in Spokane County, the number of people in the hotel, in hospitals, the number of people that have passed away. And the just amount of work it takes to put those numbers together is huge. One of the things that they did mention, and I thought it was kind of interesting, they have a vaccination to go kit. And so when the vaccine, vaccinations become available and the vaccines are available, right now it's a two-shot series. They hope to get it down to a one-shot series. But they're going to be looking at the healthcare professionals, students and others to just get these kits that will allow the distribution of the vaccine as quickly as possible. And the number one group that will be getting the vaccine will be first responders and people at the highest risk, which is people that live in group homes and are elderly. So those are kind of the top tier. There's so much information. I don't want to go through it all, but I just have to tell you, my confidence in our Health District is very high and I'm just so appreciative of their personal attention to, to making sure that our community is safe. So on that note, I'm going to go down to events. So library programs are basically curbside and to-go crafts and things like that. They're still underway. We're revisiting the opening of our library. We were a couple of weeks ago trying to figure out what day we were going to open and how we were going to open. And Justin, I know is on the, on the phone, but based on the current information that we have, we're, we're probably not going to be identifying a date until we get through this current spike that we're all experiencing. So right now it's the curbside, we're still going to continue with and the programs as is, we're not going to be identifying a day that we're going to be opening our library anytime in the next few days. And then finally, I was just going to mention, if you have fall leaves, I know I do. This Friday is the last day that you can drop them off at the treatment plant. And then Winter Glow, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, starts Saturday, November 21st. We, the volunteers have been immense and in fact, I think some of you might have even volunteered to help with the setup. And we were in conversation with the Health District today and we are continuing with the event. We, Jen has done a remarkable job between hand sanitizers, signage. We want everyone to go over to Orchard Park and enjoy it and leave. Don't hang out there. Walk through it, run through it, drive through it, but just don't hang around. And when you come, please come in small groups with your family. So if it, we're kind of saying, if everyone needs a bright light right now, Winter Glow is your bright light. So please enjoy the event. Don't hang out. So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Any questions, Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, I just want to do a shout out for the district too. I, yes, was a patron of the leaf dropout, drop off. Let me just tell everybody that leaf gathering, what, you know, for what's left is a very socially-distanced outdoor recreational exercise. And yeah, thanks for the district for letting us get out there and do that. So thanks.
Any other comments or questions on the city administrator?
Just real quick, any update on our generator for the Police Department?
Oh, may your Brickner answer that question.
Where, for the Yeah, Ben, do you want to answer that?
Yes, as far as that we, we received the generous, well, we received a generous donation today that I'm pretty excited about, that will cover the cost of the generator. The next step is for me to just go through the competitive process of getting the quotes and analyzing those so we can get that executed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not hearing any. We'll go on to workshop discussion. We'll start with the, the own 23 acre parcel legacy.
So in your packet is a copy of a letter of intent to purchase parcel 55226.9035. So that is the infamous 23 acres located off Liberty Lake Road. Over the course of the last few weeks, I think there's been conversations between us and Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. Some of the feedback that we got from the council members has been incorporated into the notice of intent, the letter of intent, excuse me. If the council has any questions, certainly we want to answer those. We also want to take public comments during that period of time. But what's on the agenda today is for you to give us direction. If you want us to move forward with this, then the next step would be to turn it over to Sean Bouts, our attorney, to work directly, he would be working directly with the Sewer and Water District Attorney. And then they would ultimately bring back an agreement for your consideration. So at this time, Mayor Brickner, was there anything else that we needed to mention?
No, I think you covered it well. I think that it's a great, a great collaboration between us and the Sewer and Water District. They were very open to thoughts and considerations with their proposal. So I'm very appreciative to the Sewer and Water District in that collaboration. Councilmember Langford?
Yes, Mayor, I'd also like to give a nod to the council because everybody worked pretty diligently on this to make sure that not only were we on the same page, but that we were looking pretty far into the future about this piece of property. So I'm very proud of the work that the council did together to move us to this point.
Absolutely. Councilmember Dunn?
Katie, just to clarify the intended action, I think we're looking at a partially executed letter of intent. Is there intention tonight to, as a motion, direct the mayor to execute on that letter?
Sean, I'm going to have you help me answer that question. I think what we want from the council is direction on the letter of intent. And then the next step would be for our attorneys to work through that with the district's attorney. But Sean, can you help me out?
Yeah, I, I, Dan, I think that's the intent, yes, is for the council to approve the letter of intent so it can be executed, you know, by the mayor on behalf of the city. And then keeping in mind that that's a non-binding letter of intent, so there's no binding obligation to the city. It's just essentially outlining some terms and conditions of what we believe to be agreeable to the parties. And then they'll move forward to put together a purchase and sale agreement that will have the final terms and conditions that will come back to the council at a later date for approval.
Councilmember Dunn?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the letter of intent to purchase parcel number be execute, approved to execute by the mayor.
Second.
Again.
Second, back to Councilmember Langford. Our discussion, Councilmember Kaminski?
I'm just, what do we say, point of order? This is on as a workshop, it wasn't scheduled for a vote? Is that my interpretation? Want to make sure we're not breaking any rules.
Councilmember Kaminski, you're correct. We didn't put it on the agenda as a vote. What we're looking for is direction. So if the council wants to indicate by affirmative, then we'll take that direction for the mayor to sign the letter of intent.
I, I guess at this point, do we, it would be probably more appropriate to say, does anybody object to proceeding with the letter of intent rather than have a motion to vote, correct, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, given the circumstances of what the content of the, of the letter of intent, I'm not concerned because obviously a purchase and sale agreement is going to come back to the council. So I'm not concerned as far as having a motion to approve the letter of intent, even as a workshop item, given that the actual agreement between the parties will come back to the council.
Just trying to keep us legal since we didn't have the vote scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilmember Dunn?
Um, I would just voice my personal perspective on the property. I believe that the best use of the property is in conservation. I believe that that small piece of undeveloped property within the urban growth area is an asset to the community and the people of Liberty Lake. I believe that the Liberty Lake Water, Sewer and Water District, specifically in their charter and mission, is equipped with the destination of conservation. I'm a little disappointed that the city of Liberty Lake isn't as committed to conservation in that regard as much as I would pulse through our comp plan and development code to review what we believe is our earnest objective in conservation. It doesn't seem to right now at least have that drive, but I value highly that the Water and Sewer District steps forward to deliver on that objective. So thanks.
Councilmember Reivers?
Yeah, just in similar light to what Councilmember Dunn's speaking to. I don't, I still don't know that I agree that we should sell the property. I wish the city would just hold on to it. I don't see a real need to sell this property. It sits there in a nice, nice location for a piece of future conference, conservation lands. That said, I really appreciate what the city, the LSWD is going to do here. And it looks like their intent is to hold it for conservation. One, one thought would be as we go on a negotiation is whether or not we can put up some sort of you know, first right of refusal or something if they were to sell it in the future. Because we are going to lose control.
There it is.
It includes a first right of
There it is. It, sorry, I missed that in the agreement. So that's wonderful. I just, I worry about us losing control otherwise. So thank you for putting that in there.
No, if they ever did decide to sell it, we would have first right of refusal with a similar negotiating price as to how they came up with theirs. Just for the
I apologize for not catching that. That's wonderful.
And I, I do want to say, I think it is important for all of us at the city that we are able to maintain that green space. And I think that there was a lot of great discussion and concern brought up regarding that and maintaining that and having that available for our community to be able to utilize that land for such use, which is why we took a step back to reassess. And then the Water District came forward. And then the water district came forward uh, with the intent to keep that green space as well. Um, knowing that that was one of our thoughts and concerns. And they also had addressed um, the concerns of the residents up there regarding the paved pathway. And they also included it in their verbiage. That they had no intention of doing a paved pathway. So it'll be uh, kept available and accessible for citizens to hike up on that hill and enjoy. So it's a good relationship. Councilmember Kaminski.
Uh, just a quick note, I see there's a question in chat from a citizen. What does access to liberty water property mean? If somebody could expand on that for viewers?
Councilmember Kaminski and uh, whoever posed the question, the water district has a tank, a water tank up on the hill. And so they need the ability to, in fact, currently they they drive up the the site to get to their water tanks. So they have property up on the hill that they want to access and this property provides them that access.
So no different than what's happening today?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Any further comments? Not hearing any. We have a motion on the table on favor.
Hi.
I, I opposed. I have it. Moving on. Flashing pedestrian beacons. Uh, Councilmember Langford?
Thank you, Mayor. I ask that this be put on the uh, agenda for tonight. Because as we were going through the um, budget, I noticed that we we have this project kind of strung out for several years. And it's not really due to money. Uh, we have the financial means to do all of these. And I was kind of wondering. I understand that there was some talk about the council had moved this to a move the number one uh, position for the flashing beacons to the north side there. And I just wanted to, everybody to have time to reflect that, you know, we have two hundred or more residents that requested a particular sequence. And I don't want them to go unnoticed. We can put a bridge to nowhere and that's a great thing sometimes. But not in this instance. We have some top areas of security concern and pedestrian safety concerns that need to be addressed. So I would like to hear the rest of the council's input on this. Because I think we need to tweak the positioning of which ones are going to be done first and when. That's a lot of people just to arbitrarily say, no, we know better. And put it over someplace else. So I would like to make sure that the rest of the council has an input and how we can address those people who are so interested that they took time not only to sign, but to go out and collect the signatures. To me, that's worth repeating and some more of our time during this meeting. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing the discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Langford. Discussion from the council? Councilmember Receivers?
I guess I'll, I'll start with um, Councilmember Forrester had a nice comment uh, uh, in a similar fashion to the data what Councilmember Langford saying right now. So I think you were saying, hey, if it's a priority, why are we, why are we stretching out over time? You were talking about a different subject. We've got the funds. Councilmember Langford, you're, you're saying the same thing about this particular project. And the more I thought about this the last few days too, I can't help but wonder, I don't recall why we're stretching it out over the next five, six, seven years. It's been going on for the last, what, three or four at least, not five or six. I don't recall when we started these. Yeah, I just, I I don't remember why it's on a ten or twelve year or fifteen year time horizon versus saying, here's all the ones we need and you know, we didn't have the money to do it next year. That's one thing where there's a real need to budget out for grant purposes or something like that. I I just don't off the top of my head, I don't recall why we have such a long timeframe for getting some of these built out. Or why we wouldn't um, try to do more. I do recall uh, this past year in particular, there were some, there were certain some manpower issues just from a city staff standpoint. And maybe there'd be some ways around that if we need to go um, uh, bid out, bid some of this out as a larger project, but um, I I do think that we should consider fast tracking this a little bit more and rather than doing it all between now and twenty twenty seven, why don't we do it all between now and twenty twenty three? And I I I'm, I'm just going out there for for sake of discussion. Um, I I guess I'm not, I just don't know why not.
Looks like uh, Councilmember Kaminski.
Yeah, um, so great points both you and Odin. Um, didn't we spend tens of thousands of dollars this year to get designs on um, a lot of these upcoming, upcoming um, pedestrian crossings and where are we on that? And now that we have that work done, I would think it'd be pretty easy um, to take the next step into moving some of those up in the schedule.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Yes, one of the themes that um, he was talking about was uh, the manpower issue, which we've talked about a little bit. Um, and as you, but as we talked, um, I guess it was last night, um, about some of the capital projects, um. And again, we still have the Henry Road and Harvard and all those things. And I'm wondering if maybe this would be another thing that we could have a project manager if 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 staff doesn't isn't, doesn't have the bandwidth, if we do want to move forward with getting some of these things done. But my other thought was that if these are, if we're putting the flashing beacons in because there's a safety concern, um, I would, I would hope that we would err more on the side of getting that done quickly rather than um, you know, four years down the road if it's, if we're truly putting something in because there's a safety issue there.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Councilmember Dunn?
So I'd reflect on our um, currently proposed uh, twenty twenty one budget with its ninety thousand dollar amount uh, allocated to pedestrian uh, crossing allocation. And is, is there a suggestion or motion here to potentially increase the amount allotted in the budget in order to um, increase the count of the locations in consideration for twenty twenty one? Operationalize uh, maybe what you're thinking.
Okay. Any other council comments? Your pro temp candy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if everybody recalls back in December, we had extensive conversations about this. And I I'm somewhat pleased where we are to the date of identifying that, yes, these are six or seven places that are a concern. Number one has been the discussion is a public safety. If it's a public safety, I believe that time is of the essence. We have situations such as when we were installing the um, control box over here on signal. It turned out that that, you know, there, there was a concern about where it was going to be put. The, that was overlooked. We ended up spending about thirty thousand dollars to move it about eleven feet because it was a public safety. We have a situation where it was less than a month ago at Liberty Creek School, one individual pointed out that the sidewalk there had raised. Within forty eight hours, it was repaired because of public safety. And I'm very pleased about how fast we can respond. We had a situation at the roundabout where somebody has run into it twice. And unfortunately, it has been brought up in the past. We need to have some sort of a light leading up to that. Now it's taken two accidents to move ahead where we are going to have some sort of a flashing light there because of a public safety. Because these are public safeties and we have these areas that have been a concern. I want to reiterate that I think time is of the essence. Uh, on day, on Councilman Dunn's comment, we budget about ninety thousand dollars for Bitterroot Mission. I did a tabulation of the other four. And it's about a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and some odd thousand dollars to do all of those. So what I've anticipated is that staff may come back because of COVID and everything is that how do we do this this year? If we could put this on a fast track. And then I noticed down on this report that was given to all of us that there's only two locations here that the city staff would be involved with. And that is Country Vista Eagle with Liberty Creek Elementary and also Wind Rock and Autumn Crossing. So the city staff is only going to be based on this involved in two of those. So my assumption is that the rest of these would take some outside contractors to do that. So with that in mind, I don't see where we would have a challenge trying to get the majority of these done in two thousand twenty one. Thank you.
Councilmember Receivers, did you have your hand up again?
I did. Um, uh, and just to respond a little bit, there, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak directly to you that uh, I would love uh, for you and city staff to just work up a plan of uh, of action that what seems reasonable for the budget going into twenty twenty one. I think there's probably, probably going to be some balances if we, if we go add up another two hundred thousand bucks or whatever, whatever the number is, or is it more than that or less than that? I don't know, but we, we're going to go decide that we're going to spend another couple hundred thousand. It's got to come from somewhere. So I look to for RJ's direction. There's going to be city staff involved, even if it's without type contractors, even at a lesser amount, but I think we probably uh, need some input from Jen and from Lisa there. So um, maybe you guys could, could bring back some thoughts and maybe you've just added into the budget for you know, if you want to make any recommendations of changes to the budget for twenty twenty one. Based on conversation, I, my direction would or my uh, vote would be that we uh, try to at least add a few more of these projects. Um, and I'm just curious how many we could buy it off in twenty twenty one if we want to do more. And it sounds like we've got a couple of the council members who would be in agreement that we're doing that.
Councilmember Kurtz?
I have um, two comments. The first one is, I'm wondering if there is any um, economy of scale or cost benefit to us doing multiple flashing beacons in one year versus kind of one every few years. Um, and then my other um, comment, I guess we received a donation for our generator which we had budgeted to pay for. Is there some way the offset of that cost could be used for this? I don't know if it's the right line item or what, but I just, something that I noticed.
Councilmember Forrester?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I approach it a little differently, maybe. There's the budget aspect. There's this site request aspect and there's a policy aspect. And as I look over the policy, some of our guidelines in our policy may not line up perfectly with some of these sites. Saying that let's do half of them next year and the year after may not line up with our budget. There's another part of the equation that I feel is important. As recently, I went to every one of these sites to look at the intersections. And there's also this part of the equation to me that is just the common sense tool. Especially around the elementary schools. There's some, there's a the, I I asked myself as I went from site to site, which one's more important? Which one's getting the most use? Which one has the highest traffic count? For the residents. So it makes me wonder if our policy is working the way we designed it. Maybe it needs some adjusting. Um, I don't know that we can afford to pay for all of these items in the next two years as um, was brought up earlier, the cost of it all. But I would uh, I would prefer as far as a uh, what's the priority is the council interject on that and go take a field trip and go look at these intersections. And come back and say, and and give us your feedback. Because there's the one over by the school, for example, I'll just use it as an example, by the uh, Liberty Creek Elementary. Part of the pushback, I think, is because there's not a good landing zone on one side of the street. That directly comes from our policy. I'm looking at it right now on my other computer. So, but there's also this part of, does it make good sense? Does it support the mission, which is safety? So there's more moving parts and pieces uh, as you step, I step back and I break it apart that way. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Forrester. I'm going to take this in kind of a three parts. Uh, Ben, can you give, because I know that Brad had asked that question about selection process and everything uh, for the citizens that are on and haven't necessarily heard about our selection process and how we go about it. Can you touch on that real quick?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So when I first got here and started looking at these projects, I looked at the resolution and basically wanted to build a tool that would help make objective decisions on selection of not just these that had been identified, but on any future beacon requests. And so what I did was uh, it in that packet that you have is basically a spreadsheet that you're looking at that breaks down the yes, no's. There's a, there's a number of uh, columns that are basically taken directly from the resolution. And each one of those columns is a criteria that is used uh, when I debt, when looking at the site to make a selection. So when you've got safe routes to school, safe routes to city parks, safe route to school bus stops on collectors and arterials, safe route to public transit on collectors and arterials, connect existing trail systems across collectors and arterials, create safe routes to large employment centers, connections to city services, traffic warrant based on engineering study. Those were the main criteria that you're looking at to to basically say, does this location meet those? And so what I did was I put a priority weight and because the resolution did not uh, specify what took more priority over the other. Um, I I just weighted them all equally and then just said, hey, what does this location request meet when I go through these, this list? So the other thing that the resolution also says is that because if it's within three hundred feet of an existing flashing beacon, it automatically disqualifies it because of the language of the resolution. Or if it's on a residential street, it does if it's not a safe route to school. So basically I built all this uh, calculation in the background of the spreadsheet to say if it meets those certain criteria, it can, it can prioritize it or rank it based on the resolution. And so what I was looking at was saying, we have a certain allocated annual budget, say sixty five thousand was, was what the, the average allocated budget we were looking at was. And then I put escalation factors on each one of these estimates. So that's how I'm getting the yearly breakdown. So if we look at priority number one, that's obviously more than the sixty five thousand, but because that was already identified and it's eighty nine, that's, that's how we came up with that number to put in the budget for the next year. And then basically for the years following, we just, we have that number capped at sixty five thousand and it can only do so many projects within that year. So it, the spreadsheet is, is it's a tool. I'm happy to adjust it any way that we need to, so we can add more money into those budgets. Um, but the main question that I would have is that when we're looking at these, are all the criteria in the resolution weighted equally? You know, um, safe, these are all or most of these have to do with a safety factor at the intersection, but we just need to make sure is the, you know, it might be a safe route to school, but was there a traffic steady warranted uh, that would also trigger this being shifted higher in the priority list? Um, so you know, I'm certainly open to feedback and and would love comments on how to pri or how to weight each one of these uh, priorities within the resolution. But basically I was just trying to come up with some sort of objective tool so that we could look at these and and then cap it at a budget and know what our costs were going to be year to year for these particular projects.
Okay, thank you. Uh, RJ, do you want to speak to the financial? Piece of it and your thoughts?
So we've discussed back in early November, we discussed that we know we're having a surplus this year. We know there's a donation coming in, so there, there is ample monies if this is a priority for council to try to do as much as they can based on the priorities or requirements of each site. So financial means, looking at a little over a half a million dollars worth of projects. It is, it's within means financially.
Jen, do you want to speak to the staffing and if it's feasible, would we have to use an outside source? Or Lisa?
Yeah, so, excuse me, so my biggest concern in is the fact that Ben, myself, Trevor and Trevor, Stephen are maxed at capacity in trying to deliver the capital projects plus our regular our regular work program. And so similar to the conversation that we had yesterday, and I appreciated Councilmember Kurtz's comment about maybe the opportunity to piggyback the project manager that could help expand these as well as the public works yard. And there, there's a lot of demands in managing these projects, even if we're not actually physically constructing them. The bidding, the construction management, the, the public works procurement requirements, et cetera. It's time consuming to manage capital projects and we, we, we have a skinny staff. So that would be, that would be my one comment that if we want to look at moving up some of the priorities within the capital facilities plan, we may well need to look at having, bringing on a project manager to help assist in the delivery of these.
Katie, did you have anything to add? You're on mute. You're on mute, Katie.
Now, that's exactly what I was going to add, Mayor. I think Lisa did a very good job explaining what's happening. Even though our crews may not physically be installing these devices, the design, the procurement, the inspection, bringing them online, it all takes staff resources. And you know, Lisa and, and our field crews are, are pretty much maxed out. So what I would like to offer, if the, if the council wants us to consider this, that we bring back a staffing, staffing needs to fund whatever position it is. And so maybe Ben and Lisa and I and Jen can talk about a project management, a project manager type position that is currently not in the budget. But Ben, I don't know if you have any thoughts, but I think it's not that it's complicated work, it's just work. And right now, we don't have the capacity to deliver these projects with the resources we have.
Yeah, thank you, Katie. I think I just want to just paint a little picture of to do each one of these projects correctly, like using the Liberty Lake Road overlay project as an example, coming from the private sector, where it was one of me here, it, it took about four people to manage that project that were usually staffed up there. And all that management is its coordination of submittals, its documentation, its, its contract closeout, its communication with all the agencies, its communication internally, utility coordination, there's a lot of little aspects of those projects that, that go beyond just the initial setup, bidding, and then closeout. So it's a, you, we want to make sure that we're doing these absolutely right and that each taxpayer dollar is being spent effectively. And so to give each project the attention that it needs takes quite a bit of staff time. So to get the projects requested from a designer and to have them all put together is not a huge lift that we can just identify those and the consultant can do a lot of that work. It's, it's really by the time that we go out to bid and then watching it all the way through construction and making sure everything's done correctly and closed out correctly. That's where the majority of the time is allocated.
Mayor Porton Candy?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate those comments with Lisa. Thank you. And Ben, thank you for explanation how you came about this. I would like to be able to sit down with you and get a little better explanation, understanding of that. I do want to point out that, Ben, when you look at the criteria that we had decided on how we move forward, that criteria alone, three of these locations would never qualify to have crosswalks on them. They were done at some time in the past where the city made a decision where a crosswalk was needed. But unfortunately, there was not a safety exit on one side of the street or the other. And that has created the challenge and that creates the emergency. So just keep in mind that three of these, possibly four, in the future would never be installed. Now, when it comes to staffing, I like Katie's suggestion to look at, do we need to bring somebody on to get this? Because it is somewhat of a priority, I think, in the majority of the councils' mind. But also, I always have to go back to one thing. It's the public safety. And one thing I've, as long as I've been in the city, even in living in Spokane, public safety, when that comes up, that always takes a priority. And here's something that's been a priority for years, but as Councilman Seaver said, you know, seven, eight years or so, it just keeps getting kind of kicked down the road. So I understand that we're understaffed in that area. But I think that because we are in a financial position, that we can look at bringing somebody on who can handle this, even if we need assistance to that individual, to be able to put all of these on the priority ones on a list to get them done. Thank you.
Councilmember Langford?
Yes, Mayor, I want to thank you and the staff and the other council members for taking this under advisement and, and being able to discuss it. Because where there's many, we can get some good views and we can set a straight path. I think it's, it's, it's worth mentioning that how lucky the City of Liberty Lake actually is. We're talking about a city that's debt free. And I want to give a pause. Okay, it's debt free. We have the money to do this project. We have the money to get the project done. And what a position that we have to be put in, that we would have to hire extra people to get the people's work done. I think that's great. And if we do it by contract, I'm all for that. But at the same time, I would ask that Katie and staff along with the mayor towards the middle of the year or towards the end, when we start looking at the budgets again, that they would come back and say, you know, we've looked at it, we have more projects coming, we're not going to stop doing capital projects. So we need to understand why we're behind, are lacking in staffing. How can we address that for the future? So we can stay on top of these things. It's nobody's fault, so there's no blaming. It's just that where we are right now, we've got a heavy load on our staff. So when some of this load gets lightened, we need to look at it as to how we can address it, how we can help it, and how we can keep it from being this way again. But how blessed and thank God that we are at a position that we're looking at putting on more people to get capital projects done in a city that's already free of debt. Thank you all so much for it. Appreciate it and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Langford.
This is also voice to support and tonight's not the first night we're hearing about sort of a, hey, staff's been running hard and and that gets in the way of some of these projects getting finished. I'm recalling at least a couple of conversations, conversations that were probably eight or nine months ago on the same subject. And so it's just, just a voice that this isn't new. I don't think it's been new for the last two or three years, but I think it's really starting to catch up to us. So just urge you guys to, to when you're talking about potential next hire or others contracting somebody else out, I would just be in support of that. You know, but, but I'll leave that to your side, decide how you want to do that. But I do think there are going to be more of these types of projects going forward and not, and not less. We're a growing city. So thank you guys for what you've done.
Very good. You, Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, Katie, with some of the discussion about maybe hiring like a contract project manager, I don't know, do you, do you perceive maybe a structural need for another FTE in the support of the people of Liberty Lake?
So to answer your question, Councilmember Dunn, I, I think you could go either way. I think you could hire a consultant to provide a project manager that you could assign member of projects to, this, the public works yard, et cetera, or you could bring on an FTE. I think either way has merit. So I think what we'd like to do, and I'm just offering this is, rather than doing it on the fly, what I'd like to do is, is talk with Ben and Lisa and Jen. Because I know Jen has a lot of, a lot of work. Let me just kind of take a pause. Right now, if you've driven by Pavilion Park, you've seen the irrigation project underway. The project is being managed by the same person that's also managing the doors and, and everything else. He's doing a fantastic job. That's a couple hundred thousand dollar project up there. And we're stretched. And I'm not saying that it's new, I'm not complaining because our, our staff is even working when they're sick. So I have to let you know that. But I think to answer your question, Councilmember Dunn, I think you could go either way. I think there's, there's advantages and disadvantages of having your own person. We certainly learned that with IT, having Todd on board. Boy, there was a lot of extra things that he did for us that we didn't know we needed really, as opposed to having a consulting firm provide us IT. So there are costs with bringing on a full-time employee. But I, my gut tells me because of the workload that we have, and I don't see it going away in the next few years, I would almost think that we should look at hiring another FTE. That's my two cents worth, but I still want Ben and Lisa and Jen to weigh in.
Yeah, so we'll, I think, I think we'll, I agree with Katie, sit down with all of us and look at what, what our need is, how we can approach this efficiently possible, both use of staff time as well as the financial side. And get back to you guys. And I do want to, I agree with Councilmember Langford in that, you know, it, it does speak volumes when you have two hundred citizens sign a request. So I appreciate Brad's comments during the citizen comment portion and those two hundred citizens that sign that, sign that petition. So that's something that, you know, we want to pay attention to and acknowledge as well. So thank you to all those citizens that were a part of that and their level of engagement. Any other comments from the council?
So Mayor, for the next steps, if I could just offer, why don't we come back on December first, our council meeting with some ideas of what we can recommend to the council modifying the budget for two thousand twenty one for their consideration during the budget process? Is, is that something that makes sense?
Okay, Mayor Porton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely. That was going to be my question is that what is a timeframe? And if, if you could get, I would be very comfortable if you get something to us by December first would be outstanding. Thank you.
Okay, any other staff or citizens, sorry, council comments? It's been a long day. Okay, not hearing any. We got a direction to move forward. Okay, we have consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda, item one, motion to approve October twenty seventh, twenty twenty, and November third, twenty twenty, city council minutes.
Second. Second by Councilmember Langford. Mission, Councilmember Kurtz?
My one clarification on the November third city council minutes, the topic specific to term limits. There was a quote about what I said in there and I was, it said something about two years. It was what I was recommending for term limits and I was recommending two terms, not two years. So I just want to make that clear on the record.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that modified. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not hearing any, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Post? I just have it?
Very good. Thank you. Item number two, motion to approve November seventeenth, twenty twenty vouchers, the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Comiscus, discussion. Not hearing any, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Guys have it?
Thank you. Item number three, excuse me. The execution of a quit claim deed for acquisition of the two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four square feet remnant of the private street right of way that is contiguous to Town Square Park.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Langford, discussion. Not being any, Councilmember Langford?
Yes, Mayor, would you please just provide a quick synopsis for the public what that's concerning?
Yeah, Kenny, do you want to?
Sure. So basically, back when, before the city incorporated and Signal Road did not go through, there was a cul-de-sac that was platted. And when the road went through, they never unplatted the cul-de-sac. And part of the remnant parcel is owned by STCU, but it bulbs out into our town square site. So in conversation with STCU, they've agreed for roughly the cost of the closing and a thousand dollars that this remnant parcel that is not developable be conveyed to the city. So that we're, we're the owner of the property west of Signal, south of Appleway. Is that enough information, Councilmember Langford?
Perfect, Katie. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's smaller, closer to Appleway, off of Signal there.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
A post? I just have it?
Consent agenda, item number four, approved contract with CDC Electrical, Inc. An amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars for the installation of touch, touchless doors at city facilities.
Second, sorry, Mike, you took a breath.
I was turning the page.
All right, we got a second by Councilmember Comiscus, discussion. I see Councilmember Forrester's hand.
Yeah, just one question. A notice on all four buildings. It says concrete, saw cutting, sheet, rock repair and painting by others if required. What's the likelihood of that being required? And if so, have we budgeted for it?
So can I, Councilmember Forrester, our, our project manager on that is not on this call. We'll talk to him in the morning and get back to you. Basically, I'm trying to think if there's.
I think the only possibilities would be at the library. Or they might have to get into.
All I want to ensure is that we've, we're prepared to deal with it and we have the funds allocated to deal with it. It is just part of.
Katie, if I may, I think that because this is all part of COVID funding, if that were to come up, that would still be included in the COVID funding. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And generally speaking, these kind of incidentals are covered by a contingency. And I believe we do have a, and I, again, Councilmember Forrester, I don't have the exact amount. I don't have the details. But I believe we've budgeted for a contingency between the doors and the electrician and then the additional work that may be. And then the additional work that may be required. There's a contingency to cover these.
Thank you.
Councilmember Comiscus, I saw your hand up next.
Yeah, I I somebody who just already brought it up, the fact that these are, these will be reimbursable through COVID cares dollars. I'd like to get that out there for the public so that they're clear on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Parton Candy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clarification, it's the three facilities, the City Hall, the Police Department and the Library. City Hall has one entrance door going in, but the other two locations, the Library and Police Department have double doors. Is it just the outside doors are going to be automatic?
So our City Hall is the door, the first door, and I'll call it the second door when you walk in is the door to your left. So the first door when you walk in and then the door to your left. It does not have a keypad. Those are the two doors at City Hall. And then also included our trailhead doors as well.
Oh, trailer. Okay, so then how about the Library and the Police Department?
Two doors at each location.
So so like at the Police Department, the we have two solid glass doors there. So there'll be an automatic door on the first. You you then also an automatic door on the second one.
That is correct.
And we and all of that for less than $20,000.
That's the like, that's only the electrician. The doors were a different contract that was already approved.
Oh. I thought we'd get a heck of a deal.
If you could get that kind of deal on everything, we'd really be moving, wouldn't we?
Are these are these plastic doors?
They're virtual doors. You really don't see them.
Really. Answered my question and also a little humor at this stage of the game.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Item number five, approved Springbrook Financial Software in Cloud Mitigation Agreement. Using CARE Act dollars, and I believe that's a fee of about $12,000. Correct, Katie?
You're on mute, Katie.
That is correct. And can I correct? It's not mitigation, it's migration. And this is also covered by CARES Act dollars.
Migration, thank you.
We we have a typo there, but it is covered by COVID CARES Act dollars.
Thank you for that correction.
Councilmember Comiscus.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the vendor will be managing the migration for the most part, Todd.
Todd?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Was there a second?
I was just, I was just gonna ask that question. I don't know that we got a. We got a second by Councilmember Receivers. For your, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I'm making other notes. I just had a question on. The. Looks like we have 60 days to cancel and it's a one, you pay for a one-year service, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if you're, if if we decide to renew for another year or two years, however long we decide to maintain it. One, I guess, do you anticipate we'll cancel this at any time down the road? And two, if we cancel mid-year, is there a refund for the unused?
Um, I'll have to get back to you on the refund for any unused. If we were, if we weren't, so let me talk to the to the company before. So it's the same financial software company that we use by us. The Springbrook has purchased them. So they're changing their name to Springbrook. The advantage we have with Springbrook or Biases really comes with the annual reports. So one, I think, one of the reasons we've been, we have had really successful annual reports is that instead of. Spending a lot of time building the annual reports, the software system is able to do it for us unlike other software. And we're spending more time analyzing the data from there. If we were going to make a switch to another software, we probably would time it at a mid-year. It would be letting the subscription. Run out and then switching to a new software because it does take a few months just to even migrate your data over and running a test. System on there. So the likelihood that we would drop it mid-year. It's more unlikely, but I will find out if we get a rebate or not, or if we get something back if we did drop it mid-year.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Comiscus.
Yeah, so since I look at the this kind of contract every day in my professional life, let me just give a quick summary. So the 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 term of the contracts a year, it auto renews. From what I can see for an additional year unless we tell the company that we are either non, non-auto renewing. Or canceling 60 days before the end of the term.
Mayor Parton Candy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers, for bringing that up. It jogs my memory. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Katie, you had advised me that the idea of this is that presently with our, so many of our staff working from home. Our Finance Director and our Treasurer are not able to do some of the work from home. And by getting this, the software, it'll assist in that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that is that is accurate. It's the way the software sits on our server now, it the bandwidth. But you precludes us from doing a lot of work, really from doing any payroll other than inside the office.
Right. So at the end of this crisis we're on, or at least to some degree where we're back to some sort of normalcy of having our employees. In the City Hall, we will not need this at that time.
I think there's some advantages to being on the cloud.
Yeah, there are, there are, there are going to be some enhancements that we'll be able to do with the cloud-based system. One of the other struggles we have internally right now is at our library. We hope when they they switch over to our onto our server, that that will fix it. But right now, they have to use a special gateway to get into the system. That's also same for trailhead. Do we, we working on connect connectivity issues? But because we're bouncing a signal from site to site, if it was on cloud, they'd be much, it'd be much better for them to use. So switching this cloud wouldn't necessarily mean we'd go back to the old finance system. We'd stay with the cloud base. We also anticipate one of the things we're rolling out this year for us will be a kind of a dashboard. Like you would see with one like a ClearGov or OpenGov, where we'd be able to run some more real-time reports from that. For council and for the citizens, for the citizens to see that we could easily upload onto there. So I I might be able to migrate away from doing the monthly dashboard and making them more real-time.
So initially, there's the benefit, as I just reiterated, there's a benefit because of our citizens working from home. And when we get to the renewal on this, we'll have a better of idea to continue on this or take parts of it off. So thank you.
Todd, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that having a cloud base makes it a fairly more secure than having a on-premise. Server.
Thank you, Councilmember Comiscus.
I'm really, really glad to see us taking this step and the fact that we can do it through a through a vendor that we already do business with. I know we've been doing business with Biased for a long time and. Good for Mark for being able to sell. So Todd, just real quick, I'm just kind of blowing through the the terms and conditions. Do they provide, what's the redundancy and what do they provide with regards to backup and recovery?
I will need to take a look at that. I don't have that in front of me. But I'm pretty sure, you know, being cloud-based, they would have some sort of redundancy for backups.
Mayor Parton Candy.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, this is really good information. I just heard you say that the benefit is more reliance or security with cloud. Does does this get us to the point where we have less, less leaning towards server? Or servers?
We would have one less server with Biased. If it's going to be cloud-hosted, then that takes that off the our premise and then into the cloud.
Thank you.
Councilmember Langford.
Yes, sir. Just in regards to the information that we're not quite up to date. On Springbook, Springbrook's ability for redundancy and for backup and reload. I would like to hold the approval by the council on this particular expenditure until we're satisfied. That our I IT division is also satisfied where we'll stand on that particular item.
So one of these items, we do want to try to use the CARES dollars for this because of the working from home. If we postpone, that might expire. So I just want to make sure council, if they're okay with that. We could also, with council's approval, with maybe one caveat is to verify the redundancy that meets IT needs. You still give us the approval, but let's let us tomorrow verify that that is meeting our standard. So you give us your approval with the caveat that we we follow up with that specific detail.
Yeah.
I'd go with that.
I'd agree with that, especially in relation to the CARES dollars and maintaining that ability of keeping everybody safe.
The CARES Act dollars expire November 30th and our next council meeting is December 1st.
November 1st.
Yeah. So we we can definitely revisit it year to year as Mr. Parton suggests.
I think I think this is a good solution to it, but it also brings to light our need to understand fully. What's involved before we start spending money. Okay, we've got some simple questions that needed to be answered. And regardless about where the money came from, it's still money that the council is approving for expenditure. So in the future, I would appreciate, I'm sure. The rest of the council would too, that we have complete answers available for us before we start voting on disposal of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Comiscus.
Yeah, so again, this is what I do. I pulled up the link to the terms and conditions. And on page nine of that link, it does talk about customer data, the Biased Cloud Financials. Nightly data saved on two hard drives, daily copies of backups, go to third-party hard drive, 30 days rolling backups. So we already have that now. And then the section, this is under section 18B2. If you get to that link and then managed backups, nightly data is saved to a compressed backup local hard drive. Daily copies of local backups go to third-party and seven days rolling backups. I don't know if we're particularly paying for managed backup, but it sounds like the the cloud-based financial is already covered in that. That piece of the terms and conditions. And they also call out their service level agreement, not too far below there in case there's an outage.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I just, I wasn't sure if we needed to do an amended motion if we're looking at getting additional information. And still being able to use the CARES Act dollars.
Well, what the information I just provided pretty much answers the question about the backup. It's in the terms and conditions that are attached to the quote that we're approving.
Does.
Councilmember Langford.
Yes, Chris, does that, does that also include or the same verbiage on what we already have from Springbrook?
Well, the thing that's interesting about the terms and conditions, it's actually documented, it's dated in 2014 and it's a Biased document. So it specifically says Biased Cloud-Based Financials, which is what we have.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. So Mayor, I'd like your idea of of just. Amending that to give them the idea to make sure that everything meets our IT's approval and we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Motion.
Sean, did you have any comments or thoughts?
Sorry, Mayor, mute. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Uh, Councilmember Kurtz, you want to restate your question?
Uh, I just wasn't sure. It was, we have the motion on the floor regarding the consent agenda. And do we need to amend the motion to. Allow for additional information so that the contract can be executed using CARES dollars? But that information will be gathered in the meantime.
No, I don't, I no, I don't think so. I think if there is a a way for other other financing, that that would be okay. I don't think it changes the ultimate. Motion is for approval.
Your discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I just have it. Public hearing. This is for City of Liberty Lake's Annual Comprehensive Plan and Code Amendments. Lisa.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we covered in our workshop at 6:00 PM.
Actually, real quickly, so just for. For sake of the public hearing. We're starting this discussion at 8:41.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so as we, as we. Discussed at our 6:00 PM workshop, there are seven amendments this year. They're all city-initiated. And they're all development code amendments. The First Amendment is to permit food trucks as a limited accessory use in C1, C2. The C1 and C2, RDC, and the mixed-use zones, so M1 and 2M3. And this was, a- as you will recall, last year, we provided for this accessory use for food trucks. In the industrial zone as a pilot. And now we're proposing expanding it to all the commercial and mixed-use zones. That's number one. The second one is. Is an amendment, it's just a, it's just a house cleaning amendment to update our junk vehicle definition in the development code. To make it consistent with the the one found in RCW 46550110. The third amendment that we're proposing are process improvements. In our, in our development code, that basically eliminating the requirement. For providing hard copies of application materials and Mylar Plats. And also requiring applicants to be responsible for the actual recording of Plats, short Plats. And finding site plans. Rather than having staff be required to do those. So there's a number of different code sections that are amending it, but it's really just a simplification. And as I said, eliminating the requirement for hard copies. The Fourth Amendment is dealing is increasing maximum lot coverage for detached, single-family housing to 60%. In the R2 zone, making it consistent with the with the maximum lot coverage. That's currently allowed in R1 and R3. So right now, it's at 50% and R1 and R3 are at 60%. So it would make them all consistent. The fifth one is eliminating minimum and maximum lot sizes in the R1 and R3 zones. In 2018, we removed them in the R2 zone. And again, one, the thing that regulates the density. Are actually minimum and maximum densities, more so even than minimum and maximum lot sizes. We also, our Sixth Amendment is an update to our lighting standards. And our last one is a change to. As I mentioned, this is really insider baseball. It's a change to our residential building permit application requirements. Where instead of, and I'm instead of. I'm requiring prescriptive footing calculation worksheets. We require them for all applications. We only require it for point load footings. And instead of requiring confirmation of radon mitigation systems proposed. We just require that they identify the type of radon mitigation system proposed. So these are, there are changes actually in the IRC and we want to make certain that our development code. And application procedures are consistent with what's. and application procedures are consistent with what's in the current IRC. So those are the seven. The point of our hearing tonight is to, is to give the public an opportunity to testify. These, these have, Planning Commission has held a public hearing on each of these. Their findings, conclusions and recommendations are included in your packets. And we have met the SEPA requirements, we have provided the notice requirements associated with the public hearing and have followed the procedures as outlined in Liberty Lake Development Code and, and Washington State Code. So with that, I would, we should probably open it up for public testimony.
Yeah, I wanted to, before we did that, I know that Anne Spencer had a comment or want to make.
Um, Mayor Brickner?
Yeah, go ahead.
I had no comments on the public hearing. It was the prior system comment earlier in the agenda.
Okay. So we'll get through this real quick. So we'll open the public hearing up at eight forty-seven. As a reminder to the public, if you'd like to make comments, you can hit by hitting the chat feature. Okay, not seeing any. We'll close it at eight thirty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to let city council know that the ordinance to adopt these development code amendments will be coming back to them for a first read on December 1st and with the second read ordinance on December 15th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And did you want to touch on the citizen comment earlier?
Um, Mayor, is that the one from Mr. Barata? That was the only system comment that I had regarding the 23 acre parcel.
Yeah, just didn't know if you wanted to clarify something or if you wanted to read that into the, and that's when we get toward the end.
I have no other citizen comments to read at this time regarding the public hearing on the development code amendment.
Okay. All right, moving on to. Anne?
Resolution number 20-283, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington approving the final plat of Tretina, fourth addition located in portions of section 10, township 25N, range 45EWM, Liberty Lake, Washington, file 2015.PL0001D.
Mayor Purten?
Motion to accept.
My Councilmember Kurtz, discussion? Hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Ordinance?
First read ordinance number 271, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington authorizing the mayor to acquire, dispose or lease certain real property interests by negotiated voluntary donation, negotiated voluntary purchase under threat of condemnation by condemnation, by settling condemnation litigation or entering administrative settlement and to pay eligible relocation and reestablishment benefits to affected parties as necessary for the purpose of installing and maintaining certain intersection and road improvements on the Henry Road overpass and roadway extension project in Liberty Lake, Washington.
Okay, ordinance number 270.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, motion.
Anne's got to read it first.
I'm sorry.
Second read ordinance, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 270. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington levying the regular property taxes for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington in Spokane County for the year commencing January 1, 2021 to provide revenue for the provision of city services as set forth in the city budget.
Mayor Purten?
Yes, motion to approve ordinance number 270.
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Receivers, discussion? Mayor Purten?
Only for informational to the citizens that this is that point six percent or 6% that would be levied.
Not 6%.
Not 6%, point six.
Point six.
Point 6%. That's what I said.
Which is just a little bit more information that is less than the normal 1% maximum increase because of item called the IPD implicit price deflator, which is kind of like a consumer price index. It fell below 1%. So the recommendation is just to adopt the point six is where that current measurement is at.
Councilmember Foyer, did you have your hand up?
I did. We're going to circle back to 271. Is that right?
Yeah, that was a first read, so we'll have us.
No questions on first read?
Yeah, we'll get through this real quick.
Thank you.
Any other comments on 270? Councilmember Krasikas?
Uh, yeah, I don't have the figures in front of me, but RJ, again, for the public consumption, we're currently at what, $1.47 ish per thousand and this will take us down to approximately, what did you say, 141?
Uh, estimate is at 140, $1.43 per thousand.
Forty-three, okay. So a drop in the rate for the Liberty Lake portion of the property tax.
That's correct.
Per thousand.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on 270? Councilmember Receivers?
RJ, do you mind speaking to the index you're using for that point six and why that's relevant versus some sort of a CPI?
Uh, that is what is adopted by the RCW. That is what the measurement is for property tax is an implicit price deflator. So would, that that is monitored every year. When we get to this time, it typically stays above 1%. But this year it dropped below. This hasn't affected the city before because it only affects cities with a population over 10,000 or more. So this is the first time we have to recognize it. But it does measure public consumption. And because of COVID, it took a kind of what you call a severe drop back in July.
So property taxes, so it's not really measuring what the property taxes are paying for, or it is?
It's not measuring, no, it's a, it's more of a basis of, 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 of looking at public consumption. For vast, vast area of, for the state of Washington, it does not have a tie into an individual taxing district's property taxes.
Yeah, what, what if we did take the, are we restricted to the point 6%?
So. Six, the maximum without, so to get back to the 1%, you would, council would take an action of ignorance of substantial need to receive the full 1% and that's the maximum that council can take unless you're going to recognize some of the bank capacity, which is a different discussion. Because it's at a point six, that was the measurement staff recommends is, is, is identifying that. Though we could, we could say there is a substantial need that we, we would like to do the full 1%.
So we, we have to identify the substantial need to go above point six.
Yes, correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Leiford?
Yes, sir, just one question. RJ, do we have any banked?
We have, yes, we do have bank capacity. We have a little, it's probably measures a little higher than 3% right now, bank capacity.
Thank you.
Questions from council? Okay, with the second read, we'll open up for any citizen comments. Specific, or number 270? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it? We don't have any emergency ordinances? Introduce, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
All right, circle back to 271. Just a quick question. Under the summary statement, talks about the rights to negotiate and potential use and so on and so on. And then it goes to say that in the event the total of the acquisition cost of any of the properties exceeds $5,000, mayor will obtain approval from the city council, which that's all great. My question is, is the $5,000 threshold applied to each parcel number individually? Because three of the, there's three sections on there that are all the same parcel number.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, so, um, yeah, so each of these, um, each of these appraisals will come back separately and each is, so if any of the appraisals is over 5,000, those will come back to city council for approval. What, and what we're doing here, just so you know, is that we have based word and exercised basically all of the provisions of the RCWs as it relates to right of way acquisition. We're doing this upfront as opposed to waiting until we've made offers and negotiated and determined that we, we, things may go south. As a, as a means to expedite the process. If you give us approval upfront, we won't lose two months should we have to undertake condemnation, which we don't expect that we will. But if we should have to, having that authorization upfront helps, helps us to keep the property acquisition moving forward and on track so that we're ready to bid this project, meet our bid schedule.
So, so in essence, we could have three different transactions on one parcel.
You could, you could in essence have three different transactions on one parcel. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, introduction of upcoming items.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, Phil, I wanted to add a little bit more to what Lisa was saying. You can have a construction easement. You can have a temporary, well, the temporary construction easement, an acquisition. So there's a different types of acquisitions that are needed to build this project. They're not all acquisition of the right of way. Some of them are drainage easements and some of them are construction easements. So on that note, so if I, RJ, will you play, please pay close attention to what I'm going to cover that's on our agenda for December 1st because my document's a little bit older and I want to make sure I capture everything. So I have a workshop at 6:00 PM on term limits on December 1st. We have a presentation by Avista on landscaping, maintenance and restoration. So Melanie Rose will zoom in and provide you information about what Avista is proposing to do related to vegetation and landscaping. Then we have a renewal of a TPA agreement with Visit Spokane. We're not proposing any changes, but they are asked, well, we do need to extend the TPA agreement for three more years if that is the council's desire. We have a public hearing on capital facilities plan. We have three first reads. One is on the 2021 budget. We have adopting also the capital facilities plan first read and then adopting the annual comp plan that you saw in the workshop this today. Before I go to second reads, I'm going to jump over to a few contracts and agreements. Western State's CAT agreement, settlement agreement. Jeff Devere is a consultant that we've used in the past to assist us with Henry Road funding. And so I have an agreement with him that I'd like, I'd like you to consider. It's similar to what we've done in the past and I've been in contact with the school district and the fire district to participate a third, a third, a third. We also have a donation of police department system upgrades. Second read, I'll jump over to that, is authorizing the acquisition of right of way for the Henry Road project, which we just discussed. And then also for condemnation of Henry Road overpass project. So I think I covered everything, but RJ, did I forget anything there?
No, you've, you covered everything I had written down, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Purten, Kenny?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, you mentioned the role or the term limit workshop. Is that the six o'clock or seven?
I have it as a six o'clock, 6:00 PM workshop.
Okay, great. For the future, I like to enter throughout there for the council consideration is that we add to, I think December 1st is going to be out of the question with everything that's going on. Possibility of the December 15th or the first meeting in January to have a workshop in regards to Robert rules for city council meetings where we could take into consideration is it what? Anne, what was her last name? I'm going blank.
McFarland.
McFarland.
Yeah, Anne McFarland did. So we can look at, maybe discuss that, any of the changes she's recommended, if we can look at that and adopt it. Second thing we'd like to get on the agenda, if not the 15th, probably the first week of the year, is role clarity. When we were dealing with Anne McFarland, that came about, the first thing we started talking about was role clarity for the benefit of the council members. And I would like to get that back on our workshop at a seven o'clock. So we can move forward on that.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else from the council? If I move to citizen comments? Not hearing any. Brad, I know you had a citizen comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to address the council one more time and say thank you for reconsidering, not reconsidering basically, but considering the importance of the, the public safety nature of all of the sites that are on the list for the flashing beacons. And I wanted to also say that I, I appreciate the all the things that have to be considered in order to make these things happen. I would like to add that if there is a need to prioritize, that I would like to reinforce council member Foyer's comment about a, a field trip for the council members to take a look at, at each one of the sites going forward. If there is a, a need to, to prioritize according to year, you know, a year, how many years out and that sort of thing. Then my, my last comment would be to, to the, the city staff and all the council members, I can, I, I definitely I don't know if I can appreciate because I'm not in it, but I can understand all the things and that have to be in, in this trying times that have to be considered and dealt with. And I want to say that as a citizen that I definitely appreciate all the efforts and the work that has gone into navigating our city through this trying time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anne, I believe we have a citizen comment. Tim Wilson, we have that? Uh, Anne, I believe we have a citizen comment. Um, Tim Olson, we have that. You can get on the chat feature.
I do, Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. Um, for general citizen comments, this is Tim Olson, a resident from Liberty Lake in the River District on Coffield Road. While I'm not familiar with the rules or laws surrounding public debt, can some of the amazing issues that have been brought up tonight be solved by public bond issues? What can this very thoughtful city council do in order to push this amazing city forward, taking advantage of artificially low interest rates of the city with the perceived cash flow to be able to pay over time? While I appreciate the comments of a city being debt-free, is this really the right position to be in right now with where rates are and the needs of a growing city? Again, I appreciate all the work of our city leaders. It is fantastic. I would just encourage this type of consideration as we move this amazing city towards the future.
Thank you. Mr. Olson? Any other citizen comments? Okay, not seeing any. We will uh adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody have a great night.
Have a great night, everybody.